Good evening and welcome to Richmond Public Schools School Board Meeting. I now bring this meeting to order. It is Monday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Attorney, please move forward with our virtual meeting statement followed by the roll call. Thank you.
Yes ma'am. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with Richmond City Council's Ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero nine three, adopted April ninth, two thousand and twenty, and extended by ordinance number two thousand and twenty dash one eighty-three, adopted August twentieth, two thousand and twenty, and by ordinance number two thousand and twenty dash two thirty-two, adopted December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, and the school board's resolution approved on April twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom, and the meeting notice contained information on how individuals needing translation services could obtain the service. The meeting notice also stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would be live streamed for the public and on the school division's Facebook page, and the link was provided. The meeting notice indicated that the board would not receive public comments in person, however, public comments could be submitted to the school board clerk, and the email address for comments was provided. The agenda of the meeting was also posted to board docs. After roll call, we will state how many board members are participating at the time of roll call. Ms. Door?
Here.
Ms. White?
Present.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yeah.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Present.
Ms. Burke?
Present.
Ms. Page? Ms. Page?
Here, I'm sorry.
Okay. And Ms. Jones?
Here.
Madam Chair, all nine members are present at your meeting.
Thank you very much, Attorney Lilly. We appreciate your filling in for us this evening.
You're welcome.
All right, we're now ready to look at our adoption of the agenda. One point zero two, and as we do during our meetings, please continue with the chat box, and Mr. Young will let me know what's whose name is listed. Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, Ms. Door?
Okay. Ms. Door, you have an amendment to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to propose an amendment to the agenda to discuss Mayor Stoney's letter regarding new school construction and specifically the construction of George With.
Is there a second?
Is that a motion, Madam Chair?
That is a motion, Ms. Door. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Door has motioned. Now we're ready for the second. Is there a second, and then we'll go into discussion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Young, yes sir?
Ms. Jones?
Ms. Jones, can we hear you second the motion?
Yeah, second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Are you ready for the discussion?
Madam Chair, Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would request that we consider rather than an additional agenda item on tonight's agenda, which is a pretty packed discussion, we also have closed session. I would hope that perhaps in new business, we talk about adding another meeting focused on George With and school construction, rather than create another agenda item for tonight's meeting.
All right, is any other discussion?
Ms. Page?
Ms. Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to comment and stay in consistent with all agenda items that we have added to the agenda. Just previously, the resolution that was put forward without any discussion, so to maintain and full transparency, if this letter was submitted to board members, I think it is worthy to be discussed and not to be the discussion not to be delayed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Is there any other discussion regarding the motion that's on the floor? Mr. Young?
Not as of yet, Madam Chair.
Therefore, the motion on the floor made by Ms. Door to amend the agenda to include the amendment regarding resolution, excuse me, regarding the mayor's letter as well as the building of George With High School, which was seconded by Mrs. Jones. Madam Attorney, we're ready to vote?
Yes ma'am, Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
No.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion fails, five-four.
Thank you very much, Attorney Lilly. Therefore, the agenda will not be amended as motioned.
Madam Chair, excuse me, Madam Chair, we still need to adopt the agenda as presented.
Yes, thank you so much. So at this time, we need a motion to adopt the agenda as written. Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Can we hear from you?
Yes ma'am, you ready, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes ma'am, good evening, everyone. I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Second. All right, it's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Mrs. White to accept the agenda as written. We're, are we ready to vote? Please move forward, Ms. Lilly.
Ms. Door?
No.
She has a comment?
Madam Chair, yes ma'am, Ms. Door. Yes, yes ma'am.
Sorry, I did have a comment. I'm prepared to vote no on this agenda. I think it's extremely unfortunate that my colleagues do not want to discuss the construction of George With, and I just want the public to be aware, this means that we are transparently not discussing George With and a major decision that needs to be made on June first. I think that's very unfortunate, and I have paid the same respect to you all when you want the agenda changed all the time. In the name of transparency, I think this is extremely upsetting, and I hope the public understands the ramifications of the fact that we now are not even able to discuss a major change to our facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Door. Any other discussion?
Ms. Page?
Ms. Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support my colleague, Ms. Door. I share the same sentiments because we cannot have it both ways. We were willing to support a resolution, and I want to be on record. We were willing to report or to vote on a resolution major that required, that you know, had a major impact to our school division, but yet we refuse to have any discussion. We refuse to have any community engagement regarding our facilities and the procurement process, and now when we have the mayor, the city administration that have, they have presented us with a letter to collaborate, to enhance the process, and but we are not willing to discuss this. We have an obligation to our community and to our constituents to make this a fair process, whether you against it or not, this deserves public discussion. And in transparency, um, it just seems like transparency has different meanings for different persons, and again, I think this is a travesty that we are doing this to our community. There opportunities to have a discussion on how to move forward with this process, but we are not willing to have a public discussion about this opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Page.
Support this as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Mr. Young, is there anyone else?
Madam Chair, you are up next.
Thank you so much, which means, Mr. Young, you are presiding. I too have the same sentiments as Ms. Door and Ms. Page have shared. Oftentimes, most of our meetings, the agenda is amended, and most of the times, data shows that it has been approved. Doesn't mean that when the resolution is discussed or brought before us, that it would pass, but just the opportunity to provide feedback. Ghost really, really is concerning me greatly in the manner in which we serve our communities, that we won't even have a discussion after all, that all of us, I'm sure, have received many phone calls. Whether it pass, would pass or not pass, just to have the opportunity to discuss it. So now we don't have that opportunity to do that, and as Ms. Page stated that, I hope the community understands that whether it passed or didn't pass, the will of the board is what passes in the end. But at least to have the opportunity is disappointing. Thank you, Mr. Young. I'm ready to move forward with the vote.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Ms. Jones also requests opportunity to speak.
All right, Ms. Jones, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I'm appreciative of the attempt that the mayor and the mayor's team made to send over a letter for us to possibly discuss. Not necessarily changes, but just the ability to at least discuss what was presented. And since we are not doing that, I do think that it is a disservice. However, the community now knows that we did receive a letter from the mayor, they were willing to have a discussion with us, and we are choosing to decline. That is fine, we can do that. But we just want the public, as you all stated, to know that there was communication that came forth, and we are choosing not to have a discussion about it. I'm not here for what we used to do, what we could have did, what we always do. The bottom line is, we're not doing it, but I do want it to be known that there was clear communication about being able to have a discussion relative to construction and George With, and we are choosing not to have it. So with that being said, when we move forward, we need to keep that in mind and be mindful when agendas are amended. And whether, like Ms. Chaberg said, they are approved or not, that we should be doing the same due diligence. We understand the will of the board, we get it, but we should do the same respect to each other as we, as what's been done to others. So that's my take on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. And we're now ready to move forward with the vote?
Yes ma'am, the motion was to adopt the agenda as written. The motion was made by Dr. Harris Mohammed. A second was provided by Ms. White. Ms. Door?
No.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Motion passes, five-four.
Thank you very much. Moving forward on the agenda, the next item is recognition. Recognition of our student representative. Superintendent Cameras?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, school board members. I am delighted this evening to introduce to you all our student representative for this evening, Shamus Weish from Armstrong High School. He is a senior. He has attended RPS throughout his entire educational career, having attended formerly George Mason Elementary School, then Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. He is a scholar role student and currently serves on my superintendent's Student Advisory Council. While at Armstrong, Shamus played football for the Wildcats during his sophomore and junior years, and after graduation, will be attending Virginia State University where he plans on majoring in biology. He hopes to pursue a career in the field of laboratory research. I am thrilled to present to you our student representative for this evening, Shamus Weish.
Mr. Weish, good evening. We're delighted to have you. Thank you so much for being here with us. You can unmute yourself and make remarks if you so desire. You're still muted. There you go, thank you. We're listening to you.
The board members and superintendent cameras.
You need to be a little bit louder. Can you be, can you be a little louder?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. You're such a kind gentleman.
Allow me to be here and serve as a student representative this evening. While I do recognize that the board is often faced with very toughs as they decide where to allocate funds, I would like to use my voice to urge the board to strongly consider funding for the athletic. Armstrong deserved new beginnings. From ninth to twelfth grade, I cherished every moment at Armstrong, both on and off the field, but the overall experience of student athletes throughout division could be invaluable. While academics is the number one priority, many students allow scholarships to pay for high cost of college education. It is increasingly imperative not only recognize this, but improve upon the playing experience of school athletes. For some reason, the grass on the field at Armstrong has trouble on. It is always a dust brown color and never the bright green colors that you would expect to see on the field. I would like to see the field revitalized and fertilized to often ensure that it remains healthy. The track isn't as bad as the others, but I believe that it could be improved as well. Our football equipment was so old and worn out from past use. When our team visited schools outside of the district, the differences were clear. It was not difficult to not compare what we didn't have to what students from other districts did. It was embarrassing for us to play on our own field because we often wondered what the imposing team was thinking about your school, the uniforms. I have no doubt that it would increase the team spirit if players were able to have facilities and equipment that were up to date. I ask you to imagine what it feels like for us to know that students just across the country line are playing under better condition. If there's just a couple of students under, that might even be an issue because it shouldn't be. I believe that if students, athletes, and are provided the opportunity to participate in the sport that they enjoy and feel proud about their school, that would encourage them to excel academically. Although I am a senior, I won't have the opportunity to experience the changes that I'm recommending. Always wanted to see not Armstrong, but the entire area that is best. Please invest in our students and make athletics a pride.
Mr. Weish, thank you so very much. Now let me share a comment about this gentleman. I met him a few months ago, maybe beginning of the year. He is, his picture is painted on a mural off of Oliver Hill Way along with another student from Armstrong during the mending walls event. And there was a wonderful kickoff along with a teacher, Ms. Allison Davis from the tech center. What's the young lady's name that's on the mural, Mr. Weish? Do you recall the young lady's name who also is painted? Okay, I can't hear you well. But he researched, he studied, and if you get a chance to see that beautiful mural as well, it's well worth the beautiful, beautiful work that was done. And I cannot figure the building right now that is on the wall, but it's right on the Martin Luther King's Bridge on, it's the center. But we thank you so much. And what you stated regarding the athletic department, you know that's my school, right? So we need to do better, and I thank you for your comments. Good luck to you. Is going to Virginia State University? Is that correct, sir? Virginia State? He's going to Virginia State, you all. So stay as long as you can. Congratulations to you, and thank you for your comments and for participating tonight. We wish you all the best, and we want you to come back and see things better at Armstrong and in Richmond Public Schools. So we thank you for your wisdom and your experience. Stay as long as you can in the meeting this evening. All right, if we can unmute ourselves, colleagues. Thank you. I also would like to recognize tonight the Richmond alumni, Delta Sigma Theta, Delta Youth Day participants. I just did a presentation for that group before our meeting. They are studying governance. So I'm delighted that under President Evans, Ms. Dennis Fleming right now is helping with the technology piece. Ms. Finney Golak and Ms. Gloria Smith, they were in charge of this event for tonight, and I am so delighted that they have chosen Richmond Public Schools to reach the chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Richmond chapter, and we welcome them here this evening as well. Stay as long as you can. Public information is our next item on the agenda. As we move forward, Mr. Dasko, our chief operating officer, will be reading the correspondences, and Mrs. Lilly will keep time. Mr. Dasko, thank you so very much. We're ready when you are to move forward with public comments. And as usual, two minutes and two hours if needed.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Kelsey Manzo, I am a teacher at Westover Hills Elementary School, and I wanted to say that I am a hundred percent in favor of a bell schedule from seven forty fifty-five to two forty-five for elementary students. Thanks. Christina Sheets, this letter is to raise concerns related to the proposed shift in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two bell schedule and request that a no vote is adopted pending consideration of the impacts of this change on the school system's youngest children and the most vulnerable high school students. The stated justification for the shift is sleep and related performance concerns for adolescent students. While academic performance as well as physical and mental health of the school system's oldest students should certainly be considered, I feel strongly that this should not come at the expense of the school system's youngest students. In particular, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the same body whose recommendations were the basis for the recommended shift to later start times for high school students, endorsed the American Academy of Sleep Medicine study that recommends that children between the ages of six and twelve sleep at least nine to twelve hours per night. Sleep recommendations for ages thirteen to eighteen is eight to ten hours. Implementing the changes as recommended will shift the start bell from nine AM to seven forty-five AM for the system's youngest students. That is a full one hour and fifteen minutes less of sleep. This shift will make it nearly impossible for working families to get their children fed, homework completed, bathed, and in bed in time to meet younger children's sleep needs. I would like to ask that you vote down this proposed change until questions can be answered regarding the impact of this change on the youngest students whose overall physical development, in addition to their mental and emotional health and academic performance, is likely to be negatively impacted by this change. I've also heard concerns from high school students regarding the impact of the shift to later start times on their ability to hold needed employment hours to support themselves and their families. This is quite concerning as a later end time has the very real possibility of resulting in decreased attendance and enrollment rates. The principle of school equity is jeopardized by this rush. V Simmons, this letter is to raise concerns related to the proposed shift in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two bell schedule and request that a no vote is adopted pending consideration of impacts of this change on the school system's youngest children and the most vulnerable high school students. The stated justification for the shift is sleep and related performance concerns for adolescent students. Implementing the changes as recommended will shift the start bell from nine AM to seven forty-five AM for the system's youngest students. That is a full one hour and fifteen minutes less of sleep. This shift will make it nearly impossible for working families to get their children fed, homework completed, bathed, and in bed in time to meet younger children's sleep needs, not to mention having young children home alone or having to keep up with a house key. I would like to ask that you vote down this proposed change until questions can be answered regarding the impact of this change on the youngest students whose overall physical development, in addition to their mental and emotional health and academic performance, is likely to be negatively impacted by this change. This impact will definitely affect attendance for our younger babies with working parents. We will end up with students being returned to schools as siblings will not be home to get them when school lets out, adding to the we don't even have dismissal procedures in place to ensure safety yet. The principle of school equity is jeopardized by this rush to address only one aspect of school performance at the expense of both the youngest and the most vulnerable in the school system. As such, please vote no on this proposed change until the aforementioned considerations can be raised and addressed. Caitlin Waldron, Henrico two thousand, Chesterfield two thousand and fourteen, Richmond two thousand and twenty due to a pandemic. Equity, what does that mean to the kids when we say they have to lose their translation device, their communication device? What makes them feel successful? Taking away these computers, you are hindering your students once again. We are in the twenty-first century with students who don't have the skill set to be successful on the eighth grade writing test in high school or college. Please don't keep our students in the dark when they are finally seeing the light. Other pressing matters, more parking at River City, is that a go? Four-day work week with Wednesday a day for students to ensure work is done and schools get a moment to deep clean, is that a go? So students can't access Google Maps. They aren't driving anywhere, but there are features history teachers are using to complete assignments related to geography, and Google Earth takes too low, long to load on the Chromebooks. Hashtag frustrating, just wondering. Laura Mueller, I am a teacher at Westover Hills Elementary School, and I am in support of the elementary school bell schedule change for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Elementary-age students are typically awake far earlier than their older peers, and the schedule will enable additional interventions to be provided in the afternoon to students who need it most while still getting them home well before the dinner hour. Brianna Branch, hello, as an employee of an elementary school in Richmond, I am asking that the schedule not be changed for school start and end times. Elementary kids rely heavily on someone picking them up from the bus stop to get home safely, and nine times out of ten, that person is a sibling in middle or high school. If the elementary kids go to school and get out first, no one will be there to get them off the bus and watch them until their parents get home from work. This puts more stress on parents to find childcare for after school when we have already had a tumultuous year of stress. Please do not change the schedule and think about the fact that most of our students and their families will be inconvenienced by this change. Bergen Nelson, I'm a pediatrician in Richmond and have several adolescent patients who are RPS students. I support the proposed later start times for high schools. We know that most teens have different circadian rhythms than younger students, and the move to a later start time is evidence-based in terms of improved student performance and well-being, relatively feasible to implement, and potentially cost-effective. The American Academy of Pediatrics has also made this recommendation that adolescents be allowed to sleep until at least eight AM. This move to a later start time would move RPS closer to these medical recommendations and could help to improve grades and test scores. I am pleased to see this proposed change. Thank you for your consideration. Laura Kern, I am writing to support the purchase of the science curriculum for the district. I am a biology teacher and an academic architect for the biology team who finally feels seen for the incredible number of hours it takes to write and develop curriculum and to prepare meaningful lab experiences for the students. The proposed curriculum supports the development of the kind of researcher our students have the potential to be, ones who are confident in the process and inquiry of science, ones who can walk out of our buildings not simply passing an SOL, but confident to enter the field of science. Speaking as a biology teacher for whom the SOL matters immensely, I am far more concerned that my students have the ability to problem solve, read graphs, and use data to support logical conclusions than I am that the curriculum perfectly covers every bullet point in the curriculum framework. I am thankful that the district has provided an option that supports the development of scientific thought in a time in which that skill is desperately needed. Antoinette Harris, changing the bell schedule to an earlier time would greatly affect me negatively. I am an elementary school teacher, however, I live in a different county. I am an elementary school teacher, however, I live in a different county. I love working at my current school. One of the reasons that I chose to work for Richmond School was that it allowed me the opportunity to get my own children on the school bus safely before heading to work. If the schedule changes, I would not be able to ensure my children's safety and get to work on time. In addition, many students struggle with absenteeism and tardiness. I believe changing the arrival time to 7:45 will only add to this problem. Please consider the arrival time to at least 8:30. Thank you for your consideration. Mary Kay Avula. I am a teacher at Shimbarazzo Elementary School and I am writing to urge you to please vote in favor of the proposed changes in start times for the 21-22 school year. As a kindergarten teacher, I've always wondered why our day started and ended so late. It made no sense to me. My young students run out of steam after lunch and most days I have several students who fall asleep in the afternoons. The ones who are able to stay awake often become sluggish and reluctant to cooperate with assignments of an academic nature. It is near impossible to keep my little ones engaged in learning until our 3:30 PM dismissal time. Additionally, we encounter far more behavior problems and meltdowns in the afternoons than we do in the mornings. They are simply exhausted by then. I'm delighted to hear you are considering beginning our day earlier so that we have more instructional time in the morning before lunch when my students are fresh and ready to learn. This will make our kindergarten instructional day far more valuable. Please vote in favor of the proposed start times. Tisha Erby. Hey Superintendent Jason and all nine district school board. My name is Tisha Erby. I'm a mother of five sons for proud RPS students. I'm writing to address three important things. First, I wanted to discuss the new proposed bell schedule. I know that there is lots of evidence that older kids benefit academically from later start times and I understand the need to give high school kids the latest start, but I would like to give middle schoolers the earliest start time, 7:45 AM. Since middle school is only three years, the fewest number of students would have to get to school the earliest and it would not put an undue burden on parents of pre-K and elementary students who must be more involved in getting younger children up and out the door in the morning. 7:45 AM is too early for preschoolers, three-year and four-years of age, and kindergarten through fifth grade to start school from a mom of a two, three, and five-year-old. Second, I am one proud George With grad class of 2007. My two sons will be going to George With soon and I feel that it's shameful that you are all considering putting building a new George With on hold because of a disagreement and school board members playing politics. Representative Mr. Jonathan Young, who doesn't live or have children in school in our district, gave an interview to the Free Press where he said the entire rebuilding of With should be rethought. Ms. Stephanie Rizzi, the fifth district representative, said last week at the Education Compact meeting that we've waited so long, why not have us wait a little longer? Our kids cannot wait. Please take the mayor and city council up on their offer to partner to build George With as soon as possible. Our kids can't wait. Hashtag new George With now. Finally, my child's school, Summer Hill Preschool, doesn't have a parking lot for teachers, staff, or parents and it needs one. Summer Hill is a preschool, which means three- to four-year-olds. Was that time, Ms. Lilly?
Yes, time.
Heather Simpkins. My son attends Mumford and I am in favor of the proposed change to the start times. As a teacher in Henrico County, the new time coincides with when I have to be at work and would make the morning a bit easier. Thank you. Christopher Erby Jr., Lamar Erby, Elijah Erby, and Emmanuel Erby. My name is Christopher Erby Jr. and Lamar Erby and Elijah Erby and Emmanuel Erby and we are all proud RPS students. We are writing to ask you to consider moving elementary school students to the proposed middle school start time and middle school students to the proposed elementary school start time because 7:45 AM is too early to get little kids up and ready for school. If you can, can you switch the times? Because as a seventh, sixth, and seventh grader, we like the early morning time, 7:45 AM to 2:45 PM, because at 2:45, that will be a lot more time to play outside or do after-school sports. Thank you. Tisha and Chris Erby. My name is Tisha and Chris Erby. We are resident of the eighth district and we are parents of four RPS students and alumni of George With High School, class of 2007 and 2006 Bulldogs. We are writing today specifically regarding the recent construction referendum that puts all of school construction under the responsibility of the school board. The RPS administration has estimated that optimistically, this change means the new George With High School will not be complete until at least 2027. OMG, that's crazy. And last week at the Education Compact meeting, fifth district representative Stephanie Rizzi questioned why there is a rush to get a new George With High School built since the school has been in need of an upgrade for a long time. Ms. Rizzi, we are here to tell you that we, the George With community, have waited long enough. George With was slated for renovations in 2002. We have been waiting. We've had two decades of failed promises and waiting. Our community can't wait any longer. Ms. Rizzi, please put the community you represent over politics. The eighth district cannot wait. RPS students cannot wait. If there is a delay in the construction of George With, you are telling our community that you are putting politics before the RPS students you represent. Dana Bowser. I would like to voice my opinion about the proposed schedule change for elementary school. I am opposed to making elementary school students come at the earlier hours as I would be facing additional daycare costs because my child would get out earlier and go in earlier. I have also done research which suggests earlier time for elementary school students could result in poor educational and behavioral outcomes. Please consider keeping the schedule the same. Carrie Richardson. I am emailing you today to seriously consider not changing the start times for RPS students. I understand that the administration would like to evolve our school system to match brain scientific studies, but as a first-grade teacher, I heavily advise that we evolve our system based upon reality and the population for which we serve. Parents and numerous teachers are not here for flipping the times, maybe at Fox and Mumford, but nowhere else. Most parents use their older kids to get their younger kids to school and off the bus in the afternoons. Yes, the administration says that they will get after-school care centers involved to assist with this. However, I can tell you now that there will not be enough room or staff for all of the parents who will need to utilize the service. Furthermore, there is no guarantee that these parents will opt to even use these services. Parents work normal hours like we work and because of this fact, there are already some parents who are late picking up their children as the schedule stands, which causes teachers to have to hold their kids past dismissal time, which causes them to be late picking up their own children or for whatever they have planned after work. Can you imagine how many parents would be late if dismissal time was earlier? We are not working with a quote "ideal" population. Our K-5 students don't go to bed at 7:00 to 9:00 PM as they should. They are up playing Minecraft and Roblox. I know this because they tell me, they're very honest. This means that they are groggy and difficult to motivate in the mornings. I have been teaching for 14 years and every year I have first graders walk into my rooms, sleepy or falling asleep during class. After lunch and recess, all the K-2 kids need naptime. I already foresee how much worse it would be if K-2 had to wake up and come in earlier. Learning would not get done after lunchtime, which is unproductive and frustrating. Why have 15 minutes been added to the elementary hours? The kids are already in school long enough, so why are we adding? Jessica Bloomberg. I am not alone in having made plans for daycare for the upcoming school year. These plans and payments were based on the school's day start time that had existed for at least 15 years. This change in start time will be impossible for many of us that have made daycare plans. I hope that you can postpone this change in the start time until next year. Julie Joyner. I'm a third district parent and parent of two RPS students. Please approve the proposed resolution adopting a collaborative approach to ensure the construction of George With High School without delay. Please take time and care to develop a sound process for future construction. Please focus on making policy decisions that help students who need it most. Cynthia Green. I'm writing to ask that the district consider making June 17 the last day of school and the 18th being off an observance of Juneteenth. The 18th is a half-day anyway and mostly a waste of time for all concerned. It also makes more sense to observe the holiday the day before and not two days after. I know that local school districts are doing this. Robin Mines. I'm a fifth district community leader and George With alum. I am writing to request that the board officially put the discussion of school construction ownership on hold and focus on getting kids safely back into schools this fall. Please continue with the current plan to begin this current phase of building this summer, including building a new George With, and please revisit the topic of school construction once our kids have returned safely to school. School construction is an important topic, but we must prioritize RPS students over all other important discussions. Student achievement is your most important accountability and student achievement starts with RPS students inside RPS buildings, learning and growing together safely. Please do not force the RPS administration or support staff to focus on anything else until that has been achieved. RPS students have been out of school buildings since March 13, 2020. That's well over a year. Please do not discuss anything else until you have ensured a safe, well-managed return to school buildings this fall. Joe Kennedy. I am a grandparent of RPS students, a former RPS teacher, and a resident of District 1 through 9. I am writing to ask that you put the discussion of school construction ownership on hold and focus on getting kids safely back into schools this fall. Your top priority right now must be planning for the return of students to school in the fall. Please continue with the current plan to begin this current phase of building this summer, including building a new George With, and please revisit the topic of school construction once our kids have returned safely to school. School construction is an important topic, but we must prioritize RPS students over all other important discussions. Student achievement is your most important accountability and student achievement starts with RPS students inside RPS buildings, learning and growing together safely. Please do not force the RPS administration or support staff to focus on anything else until that has been achieved. RPS students have been out of the school buildings since March 13, 2020. That's well over a year. Please do not discuss anything else until you have ensured a safe, well-managed return to school buildings this fall. Catherine Lanuet. I respectfully ask for you to not change the elementary school start time to 7:45 AM. It is way too early in the morning. If the board would like to explore earlier start times from the current 9:00 AM start, perhaps 8:30 AM would be a good compromise to see if that earlier time is possible. Anything earlier will be a major strain and out of line with what other regional elementary schools offer. Amanda Reisner. I'm writing tonight to express my support for the proposed time change next school year. Our elementary school children will be much more successful and productive if we move to an early start time. At my school, we do our best to try and schedule most of the crucial learning first thing because we see a huge decline in attention and focus in the afternoons. If we started earlier, as the data shows, our younger kids will perform better in school. We also need to make sure we offer affordable after-school care options to help ease some of the worries about where the younger students will go if we change the times. I am also writing to ask the board to consider making June 18 a holiday for all of us, thus making the 17th our last day this year. It makes more sense for it to be Friday than Monday because Monday is not as close to the actual date. Testing will be done and what a great way to show that we lead with love for all employees and our students than to allow everyone to celebrate the holiday. Brian Bills. I urge you to accept the city's compromise offer for building a new George With High School. Rebuilding the school is an urgent matter contrary to what Mr. Young appeared to say in his interview this past week. I hope you will act with urgency and respond to the voice of the community. I hope we can all move on from this matter to spend our time on more constructive conversations, such as how the schools reopen, what supports will be offered to students whose academic progress has slowed, how the new curriculum is being implemented, et cetera. Patrick Haynes. I urge you not to adopt the proposed resolution regarding a joint partnership for With High School construction. The language of the resolution would leave control of the construction with the city's administration. RPS should maintain control of designing and building George With High School. The RPS administration needs to put the politics aside and just proceed to do what is best for students, which is to build schools you can be responsible for and proud to open and operate. Rosalyn Gibson. This letter is being composed to express my interest and request for RPS to accept Mayor Stony and the Richmond City Council proposal to construct a new George With High School by 2024. Please discontinue dismissing, delaying, and denying Richmond Public School children and staff the advantage of attending a safe, well-constructed 21st-century educational facility by 2024. Our children should not attend schools or practice in conditions that are dilapidated, literally falling apart and environmentally deplorable. The school board should not allow our students and staff to suffer under these conditions for another seven to 10 years or beyond. One of the school board representatives was quoted on May 6, 2021, in a WRIC8 online news article. Quote, "However, school board member Stephanie Rizzi questioned why there is a rush to get a new George With High School built since the school has been in need of an upgrade for a long time." Quote, "Certainly, I want it built as soon as possible, but I want it also to represent the best we can offer those kids at the same time," end quote, Rizzi said, end of quote. School board member Rizzi, I want to share with the school board and you Martin Luther King's quote concerning the fierce urgency of now. Quote, "We are now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now. In this unfolding conundrum of life and history, there is such a thing as being too late. This is no time for apathy or complacency. This is a time for vigorous and positive action," end of quote. There has been no rush to rebuild a new George With High School and that is the problem. The rebuilding of a new George With High School has been postponed for far too long. I, along with other tax-paying citizens, demand that RPS school board and you work toward a solution with the city of Richmond. Faith A. Alejandro. I support the proposal of Liz Doerr and others reflected in this draft resolution. No more delays can be afforded by With. They deserve better. Whereas Richmond Public Schools has the goal to ensure that every child is educated in a modern and safe facility. Whereas in 2018, the Richmond School Board adopted a facilities plan to modernize school facilities. Whereas the 2018 facilities plan prioritized George With to be built as part of Phase 1. Whereas George With was built in 1960 is rotting in plain sight and posing a safety risk to students. Whereas any delay to the construction of George With is not in the best interest of students, staff, and teachers. Whereas changes to existing school construction practices will result in significant delays. Whereas it has been widely reported by city procurement and Richmond Public Schools that the only way to ensure a 2024 opening is to authorize the city of Richmond to issue a request for proposal for design architectural services no later than June 1, 2021. Whereas the mayor and members of city council have outlined a new process for the construction of George With that addresses concerns about transparency and budget overruns. Therefore, be it resolved that we authorize the administration to proceed with procurement in partnership with the city for the construction of George With so that we can ensure by 2024, students are welcomed into a safe, modern building that allows them to reach their highest potential. Kim Gomez. I think what has been put forth by the city's administration is a good compromise. It builds on existing strengths. Pass it, please, and let's move on. The public is tired of all the back and forth and want to move forward. As a school board body, I am really excited for the potential of what you nine representatives bring to the table. I'm looking forward to seeing the good things you are able to do to bring about the most equitable policies for the most amount of kids. Let's pass this resolution and get to it. Katie Barron. Thank you for your passion and dedication to Richmond Public Schools. I am a passionate and dedicated fourth-grade teacher in the district. This letter is to address the change in bell schedule for next school year. While I appreciate the science behind it, this is not the time for implementation. We are craving some normalcy as we get back into our buildings after a year and a half. As Dr. Harris Mohammed stated so eloquently in the last meeting, teachers signed intent forms months ago. Although you are within your right to make a change following this action, it appears that you aren't valuing your employees when you make sweeping last-minute adjustments like this one. The time to present massive schedules The time to present massive schedule changes like this one is not in May, but rather January or February. Because you are suggesting this change so late in the game, the task of informing families is monumental. Since you are proposing a year-round calendar for the 2223 school year, wouldn't it be better to wait a year? It seems like rolling out a vastly different calendar along with a vastly different bell schedule would be an easier task. Finally, the bell schedule is not the only change you're proposing at the elementary level. You are also lengthening students' seat time by 15 minutes. This takes away teacher planning time. Elementary school teacher planning time is in short supply, competing with mandatory meetings and PDs. Some days, the only unencumbered planning time we get is after school. Now we will have 15 minutes less each day. If and when this new schedule is adopted, please stick with a six-hour and 45-minute school, student's school day, so that teachers can have maximum planning time. Thank you for your consideration. Jen Jefferson. I think 7:45 is entirely too early. Why must we change at this time? Shannon Dowling. Hello, school board. I am writing to urge you to request further clarification from Mayor Stony regarding his letter before proceeding to pass the resolution that members plan to propose tonight, creating a collaboration between the city and RPS in order to issue an RFP for George With tonight. The city has a record of rushing school construction projects, and that leads to uncontrolled costs and poor quality work. Rushing also gives our students a facility that will serve our community for the next century that does not prioritize the needs of our community. I've been trying to figure out why Stony is pushing control of construction so hard. He does not have children at RPS, and he is in his final term as mayor. Why does he insist on retaining control? The PAP gave me the answer. AECOM, the city's third-party project manager, donated $10,000 to his two PACs. In addition, SB Ballard, the, I'm assuming, General Counsel for the replacement of Green Elementary, maybe General Construction, excuse me, GC, for the replacement of Green Elementary, donated $8,000. And Branch Group, the GC for the replacement of George Mason Elementary, donated $9,500. We need to ensure a clear, transparent process that prioritizes children and educators over campaign donations. We vote for you, our school board members, as our voice in decisions around the education of our children's future. As someone who has worked on learning environments as a profession for 20 years, I know just how important the learning environment is to children's well-being and sense of belonging and to educators' creative and professional freedom. We owe it to them and our city to get this right. Thank you for your time. Nicole Glover. There has been little discussion on changing school start and end times except for the study that has been buried within several documents presented to the board. As we try to process how and what physically returning to school will look like, now we are being asked to digest that our work hours may change. COVID-19 has forever changed how we will do things in the future. As a district, we are constantly plagued with attendance issues. I ask the following. Has the administration taken into consideration how changing start and end time for high school students will negatively impact attendance? Has the administration taken into consideration how this might impact teacher retention at both elementary and high schools? It is my opinion that the leadership team is trying to implement too many changes all at once. I would ask that the school board and administration work the City of Richmond to build a new George With High School to open fall 2024. The students, teachers, and staff deserve to work and learn in a building that does not pose health and safety concerns. For the reasons mentioned above, I respectfully ask that you vote no to a change in school start and end times and yes to building a new George With to open fall 2024. Kelly Miller. I would like to say I am not in favor of changing the school hours. 7:45 is early for the younger elementary school-aged kids. If any change, I would suggest high schoolers begin at 7:45 and elementary schoolers begin at 8:45. Valerie Warshaw. I am a third district resident and parent with two children. I have been closely following the details and debate for the Schools Build Schools motion that was passed a month ago. That was a major vote to change the construction process for RPS. The unintended consequence of passing this motion at the time was that it was proposed is that it will delay the construction and opening of the new George With High School by a few years. Recently, city council and the mayor sent over a compromise proposal that gives RPS more representation and ability for input in each stage in the process, but also keeps the opening of the new George With High School on time for 2024. Let's do right by our RPS students and families on the South Side. Please vote to pass the motion that will be put forth by Representative Dorr to keep the construction of George With on time. Then our efforts can go back to concentrating on reopening schools for the fall. Thank you for your time. Charles Willis. We are requesting that you all support the efforts of the George With High School's community by building a new George With now. George With building currently sits in the 5th district, but the majority of the students come from the taxpayers from the 8th and many from the 9th. Talks of building a new George With has been ongoing for over 15 years or more. We have asked Mayor Stony to provide funding now, and he did. We asked city council to support the funding now, and they did. So we are aggressively encouraging you all to work with the mayor, city council, and your supporting colleagues by supporting the new resolution that is being proposed tonight. This resolution will help ensure by 2024 our children, my grandson, and others will walk into a newly-built George With High School and have an opportunity to reach their highest potential. Do not delay another day. Elliot Hapsel. Haspel. School Board Members. I am a parent of an Obama star and a resident of Richmond 6th District. Please pass Representatives Dorr and Jones's motion to move forward with the construction of George With as quickly as possible. This plan is best for RPS and best for our students. Thank you. Kimberly Wolf. I am an RPS parent and resident of the 3rd district. I write to ask that you please pass the motion put forth by Representatives Dorr and Jones to continue the construction of George With and to allow the board and RPS administration to refocus attention on the planning and logistics of opening our schools safely in the fall. Please show our students that they are your priority by working with the mayor and city council to set our priorities right in the coming months. Teresa Kennedy. My name is Teresa Kennedy. I am a parent of two RPS kids and a resident of the 3rd district. I am writing to ask that this board please approve Representative Dorr and Jones's proposal that will both enable the school board to have more oversight over construction while not delaying the building of George With. I am beyond concerned with the recent actions of this board, especially as it relates to what this board has been focused on. Where are RPS students in this conversation? When was the last time this board discussed student literacy rates or the achievement gap that have been and will continue to be exponentially increased due to the pandemic? I must remind you that all but 800 RPS students have been out of the buildings since March 2020. It is completely inappropriate to be discussing anything other than the plan to get students back in buildings and to make up for schooling loss due to the pandemic. Please stop playing politics and start putting the kids first. If you put the kids first, everything else will fall into place. Jordan Alexander. The leveling that is occurring at the middle school level is quite puzzling, to say the least. Not only have the elective teachers been affected, now we have the science and history teachers as well. History teachers were told that there weren't positions available, that they would be moved to. So what exactly does this mean? Does this mean these teachers will be released? Will they have to find another job this time of year? Why is Dr. Neighbors immersed in the idea of all schools on one schedule in one box? English and math teachers will now have to teach this curriculum, again, that is not aligned and the kiddos are failing due to it, and have remediation through the programs that they bought. We have to go through the remediation programs because the BDOE is asking for this data. This means more money for licenses. Dr. Neighbors continues to turn a deaf ear to principals, teachers, and counselors about the schedule and the curriculum. We are all in one nice box. She sticks to her script. Hill, Benford, Brown, and MLK, all specialty middle schools, all are having issues with the scheduling and not meeting the requirements needed for the students' grant transcripts. If she would allow math and English teachers to teach a curriculum that is aligned to the BDOE SOL curriculum, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't need to have remediation to the degree they are pushing. Dr. Neighbors has received feedback from all parties, and yet she is sticking to her script. We can't afford to lose any more time that we've wasted with this non-aligned, common core curriculum and scheduling that she has been told is not working. Dr. Neighbors needs to listen to the staff. School Board Members, please help our schools in succeeding. As with these last three years, we've seen a huge decline. Thank you. Jimmy Hart. My name is Jimmy Hart. I am a resident of the 8th district and an advocate of George With High School. I am writing today specifically regarding the recent construction referendum that puts all school construction under the responsibility of the school board. As a school district that continually states it does not have money for our needs on the school level, I do not understand why we are adding more salaries to the top of RPS. In doing so, we seem to be showing our inability to have conversations with the city administration. This should not be as difficult as it has been made. With has been put off three times. Once, when it was going to be renovated, and twice, when it was up for rebuild. The current With building has a crack in it from a past earthquake, which has now become two cracks on the corner of the main entrance on the Midlothian side. This, plus other structural issues that have not been addressed, because each time we have been on the list, they have been put off with the answer being, quote, "You are getting a new building." I am for the school board to keep working with the purse holder, the city, and not adding positions, which will give the excuse of "we don't have money" to take care of the things that are more needed on the school level. Communicate clearly with each other and stop what has been going on. Courtney Fanning. My name is Courtney Fanning, and I'm a middle school teacher in Richmond Public Schools. I was notified 10 days ago that the schedule for all middle schools that requires students to attend math and English every day and to attend science, history, and electives every other day will be in effect for all middle schools next year. This schedule change was done without parent or teacher notification or consent, and is resulting in science, history, and elective teachers losing jobs at their current school. When teachers who were at risk of being leveled questioned this decision, it was, we were told it was to increase test scores in math and English. Why is the district taking time and resources from history and science the year of a global pandemic and Black Lives Matter despite there not being any data presented or available to provide evidence that this will lead to accreditation? Jeannie Baucher. Thank you to all the teachers who wrote in with concerns about the proposed science curriculum and the current implementation of the Eureka Math and L curriculum at the May 3 board meeting. As a parent, I appreciated hearing your concerns as you are in the best position to know how these curricula are working or not for our kids. A community member raised important issues about errors in student transcripts. The admin's presentation about transcripts has been delayed twice and now no longer appears as an agenda item for today's meeting. The transcript errors are an issue for RPS students. Please allow the community and school board to hear this presentation. Lastly, the May 13 letter from Mayor Stony and some city council members to propose, quote, "a compromise on the Schools Build Schools" resolution appears to leave the scope of school board authority over the process vague. I hope the school board ensures it retains oversight of design and construction of schools so that the new construction is done correctly and thoughtfully to reflect the needs of teachers and students. Angela Golden. My name is Angela Golden, and I am writing to express my disappointment in the recommended bell schedule for 2122. As I have previously shared with the board, I think that it is unfair to place a change of this magnitude with such far-reaching fallout on the table at this late date. Teachers have already signed intent-to-return forms based on our current, in-person bell schedules, a schedule that fits the needs of our responsibilities to our own children and families. While I am fully aware of what the science says, and I understand the benefit that a new schedule may offer to some, I am also fully aware of what it says that you would, what it says that you would be willing to push this vote through without any feedback from staff members or families. When did you decide that our voices don't matter? Does it not make more sense to make the new bell schedule a part of the year-round calendar plan for 2223? This will afford everyone the opportunity to plan for the change. I am a mom before I am anything to Richmond Public Schools. I am not willing to leave my own young child at home alone or at a bus stop to meet the demands of a new schedule. Does this mean that after 28 years of service to RPS that I will have to seek employment elsewhere? Perhaps, and if it does, shame on you. Thank you for your time. Deborah Rowe. Please consider these reasonable comments and answers the question, and answer the questions regarding Stony's letter before any vote is taken. If an RFP is issued on 6/1, it should be for architectural services only and should not include third-party management of the design process, since the third party will be hired after the RFP. The problems that the other facilities have faced were during the construction process with overpriced vendors and shoddy work. RPS should not give up oversight of design or construction to the city at this point. Terms need to be made much clearer than what is outlined in this letter. Two, the city already uses a third party for its construction projects, and the company donated to Stony's recent campaign alongside the GC at GW and the GC at Green. SB needs to first understand how the process outlined in this letter assures the results are going to be different through a third party as outlined in this letter than services used in the past. Three, any representatives appointed by RPS need to be approved by the school board. That task should not be solely delegated to the superintendent as it removes school board and constituents from the process of design and construction of facilities in our community. Four, quote, "Report to RPS," end quote, should be clarified. Does this mean school board or superintendent? Are the proposals for architectural services as currently outlined in the RFP that the city is ready to issue for a custom solution or a prototype as utilized for the current projects? If a prototype, what are the methods of engagement from teachers, students, and community members to adapt the facility to the specific needs of the neighborhood? And finally, it needs to be clearly spelled out how teachers and students will have a voice in the process. To the city superintendent and school board. Monty Davidson. Thoughts for discussion. Top priority needs to be to work with the mayor and Richmond City Council to build a new George With High School by 2024 and remodeling the Altria property for RTC. This should not be a responsibility of the school board and administration. Instead, hire a director of construction and possibly a project manager to work with city council and the mayor on each site. However, allow RVA to handle bids, logistics, et cetera. Was the updated draft 2122 school calendar approved? The approval is not in the board meeting notes or on the website, and with this year's extended 2021 summer program, you essentially have agreed to a year-round calendar even though the consensus was to wait until 2223. The calendar could be shortened by moving parent-teacher conference stays to the afternoon and evening. What calendar has been given to current employees and future hires? Has a school board received a status report on the summer program? Amy Wentz. I'll keep this short and simple. Let's all work together and collaborate to build a new George With High School and improve all our school facilities for our students, teachers, and staff. That's a topic that most everyone in the city agrees on. Identify concerns, risks, and past mishaps, and let's work to fix and correct them. We've waited long enough. Build George With without delay. Molly Garth Wait. I am writing to the school board as a first-year RLA teacher in RPS. In August, I remember feeling a little taken aback when we were given our schedules at River City Middle School to find out that some of my colleagues in the science and history department at my school were being treated as electives. As teachers, they would see a class of students every other day. More importantly, students would receive half of the amount of history and science as they did ELA and math. At the time, I admittedly did not think too much about it beyond acknowledging my initial shock. Hmm, that's strange, I thought. Maybe this is just something we are trying as a new school. Maybe this is a trial year. In recent weeks, though, it's come blazing to my attention that this was not just a trial. It was an intentional plan, a plan aimed at increasing test scores in core subjects of math and English, a plan aimed at reaching and/or maintaining our accreditation. I'm now writing to you with some questions and concerns about this plan that I believe will not only solve a problem related to test scores in English and math, but more importantly, hinder the potential for future scientists, historians. Again, I am an English teacher. This plan may not directly impact me. One, if this plan does go through, why would a young, capable, excited, culturally responsive educator with a certification in science or history choose to teach in RPS with the looming threat of being leveled each year? Two, do parents and families know that this was what was taking place? Were they asked? Have they been informed that this is planned to be adopted across the district in the 2122 school year? Three, do you have any data that shows this schedule will work? Does taking away time in history and science and thus adding time to math and English actually yield higher proficiency in those said core subjects? If so, could you please share that data? Four, if the planned schedule is being implemented with the goal to create interdisciplinary opportunities to an English. Kara Rose. School Board members, I am an RPS parent and a resident of Richmond's third district. Since the beginning of April, this board has been entirely focused on school construction to the detriment of RPS students. Please pass Representatives Doran Jones's motion to move forward with the construction of George With as quickly as possible so that you and the administration can get back to doing the most important work you have, which right now is to get RPS students back into schools and to make up for any and all lost time. Please work with city council and the mayor to show RPS students that you care about them more than your personal politics. Thank you. Tara Fitzpatrick. I am an RPS parent, community partner, resident of the second district, and parent of students in the third and fifth districts. Since the school board and the community was blindsided in early April by Ms. Gibson's resolution on school construction, the school board has lost focus on having our students safely return to in-person learning. I ask that you vote in favor of Representative Jones and Dor's resolution to move forward with the construction of a new George With High School as soon as possible and let Mr. Camaras and his team focus on getting kids safely back into schools this September. RPS students haven't been in person in over a year and so many students and families are suffering as a result. Please focus on the important task at hand, a safe in-person return. And that completes the public comment that was submitted before 1:00 P.M.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hadasco, for reading. Thank you, Ms. Lilly, for keeping time. And thank you to all persons that participated this evening in sending in their comments. We now will move forward to dreams for RPS update 4.01 graduation. Mr. Camaras, that is.
That is me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. I'm looking for you. Okay, I see. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Camaras. I'd like to report an update on our dropout rates and on-time graduation rates. This data is for the cohort 2021 school year, sorry, the 2021 cohort. And it is our most active rate based on students who are in the building currently. And happy to report that our projected rate is still trending towards a significant decline, looking towards a 12% dropout rate down from 23.2% in the previous year. We see that same pattern continue across all of each of our subgroups. And so you can see again a positive decline across the board for each student subgroup for dropout rate. Additionally, as we look to on-time graduation rate for this cohort, that is students who graduate within four years after beginning high school, we continue to see a positive upward trajectory. Overall, as a school division, we are trending to 85.7%, up from 71.6%. And again, nearly across the board with a few small aberrations, we have significant increases at every school. And similarly, we see the same pattern, the same positive pattern for on-time graduation rate across all subgroups for the 2021 cohort. That is an update on our data. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. Mr. Young, are there any questions or comments?
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Epp. On slide, I think it is slide four. How did you calculate, what was the, and I'm not asking you to discuss the law or anything, but how did the division come up with a positive 14.1?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. That is the last year in 1920, our final on-time graduation rate was 71.6. And we are projecting currently for this cohort to be 85.7. And so that is a difference of 14.1. We came up with our projected rates based on our school counselors. We have a senior watch list and our school counselors designate a projected status for each student based on a few variables. Have they reached, are they, have they achieved course credit in their required courses? Or are they currently enrolled and doing well in those courses? Have they earned sufficient number of verified credits? And/or are likely to earn enough verified credits this spring? So for example, a student who needed five would not be considered likely to graduate on time, whereas a student who maybe needs one or two would be. And then they also look at current grades. If there's significant failure rates in a course they need to graduate, they might designate that student as, if it's only one course, they might designate that student as a likely summer graduate. If it's multiple courses, they would designate that student as a late graduate. So we take all of that and then use that to project the 85%.
Thank you. Madam Chair, follow-up question?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Dr. Epp, the seniors who, who reportedly were missing, and I may have the statement incorrect, so I mean, at any time, please correct the statement, had not completed modules in the fall semester, I guess, modules from the summer. Are those students in the projected rate of the 85.7? Like, did we catch them up?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, that we take into, we are taking into consideration whether students had remaining credits to earn from the spring 2020 modules. And so counselors and principals report out on that and they, if a student has so many that they still haven't completed, they would not be considered on track to graduate on time.
For the 21.
Cohort.
Graduation cohort. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Young, is anyone else listed?
Ms. Page, then Ms. Rizzi, to be followed by Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Dr. Epp, thank you for this information. And I think we all should celebrate this moment because, you know, making such great progress. We know that we still have more work to do, but we are moving forward. So again, I want to thank the administration. Thank you for your hard work. And thank you for providing this information. But my question is, how often are we tracking this data to make sure that the trend is moving in the, you know, in the path that is moving, moving?
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you for the, the positive shout-out. All the credit goes to our counseling team and our principals and teachers who've been working around the clock, our engagement team doing outreach. And to answer your question, we, we have bi-weekly meetings where principals provide updated data on our tracker. And we, we have a whole team meeting and we report out across school teams and division teams. So bi-weekly, we validate this data. And in preparing for this board meeting, we, we also validated it based on current class performance for courses that are needed for graduation.
Okay. Thank you. And a follow-up question. How are we communicating with the public regarding this information?
Well, the, the primary. Oh, so well, the primary mechanism is through our board meeting. These are projected rates. So I think while we are very optimistic and we, we believe our projection model is fairly accurate, we want to wait until these numbers are official, which will be at the end of summer. Once, and so we wanna, we're just gonna keep our, keep our eye on the prize, keep working with students, keep, continue to update data until it is official. And then we can celebrate more publicly.
Yes. So I'm looking forward to the end of the summer to receive that final information. So again, to celebrate the hard work of our students and our counselors and all of our staff that support our students.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Epp, for your presentation. I'm so happy to see that our graduation numbers are indeed increasing or they look like they're projected to pretty significantly. And I know that outreach is happening. I was out delivering flyers for some community announcements and I saw those door hangers on people's doors. Like, where are you? We've been trying to reach you, you know, going out to families, right? And so I was really impressed that I saw those. I mean, it's evidence that the outreach is happening. My two, I have two questions. One is, was the senior enrollment pretty stable, the same in 1920 as it was 2021? Or the number similar?
Cohort size, yeah, very similar.
Okay. And then, yeah, I just wanted to get more details about when we would get the updated numbers. You said end of summer. Is that like August?
Yes, ma'am. The final, we submit to the state a summer SRC, which is the Student Record Collection Report, where we provide updated graduation and dropout data. And that is, once the state kind of pulls it all together and validates that, right around the same time we would normally get accreditation ratings, which is typically mid to late August, early September, is when the state would validate our graduation data. So end of summer, early, you know, September, more or less, is when we expect to have that. I believe in the past, we've traditionally been able to present final data to the school board around mid-September.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good, good evening, Dr. Epp. I just have one question for you. On the dropout rates, you were saying if a student, I guess, have two or more classes, what process do we have in place at RPS when we identify that at the beginning? I know that we do have Spartan Academy. Is that one of the processes that is used? And what are the methods?
Sure. Great question. So, well, Spartan Academy is traditionally reserved for students who are placed there for behavioral or disciplinary reasons. But some students may, may choose to stay there longer to help with credit recovery. However, we do have a program under RAS that's part of credit recovery that's called the Aspire Academy. We also have a credit recovery program called the PLC or the Performance Learning Center. Those are two programs that are very similar that we've talked about with the board combining in the future. So we do have, we have a program for students who are overage, undercredited, if they have significant credits to make up. But we also, our summer school efforts, a student will identify, so for example, our current juniors who are potentially not on track to graduate in the next year, we would be encouraging those juniors to come to summer school for credit recovery. So we try to look ahead for the summer. But then if they start the school year as seniors and they, they have, you know, one or two credits to make up, we, their counselors can work to enroll them in a credit recovery course they take throughout the year alongside their core schedule so that they can make that course up. Or they can also be slated as a summer graduate, meaning they can focus on their 12th grade courses, but they graduate this summer. And that still counts as graduating on time. And then lastly, for students who have dropped out already that we're trying to bring back into the system, we have a program that's called the Secondary Success Center, which offers classes and programs in the evening for students who may be working or things like that. And again, it's specifically designed for students who have already left the system and are older, but still can qualify for a high school diploma.
I have a follow-up question, Dr. Epp. Now, the Aspire and the PLC, they are similar.
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't one of them, the PLC, you have to be tested to get in there? Or can you just come the same way? I'm kind of a little confused in that. Can you explain?
Historically, there's been different placement processes between the two. The PLC model required a certain reading level test to be, to be passed. That was certainly not the place, the, the process this year with COVID. So in our budget discussions and as a board, one of the things we've been discussing with Mr. Trotter and his staff, as well as the PLC staff, is we will be combining those programs in the coming school year under a new name with, you know, pulling together the staff and using the best from both models because the student profile is the same, which are students who are, who are interested in self-paced learning and who maybe tend to be behind a bit in their credits and the traditional school day doesn't really work for them. And then we, you know, for example, we partner with communities and schools to provide mentorship. We'll also be adding a component with the Technical Center to give those students an opportunity to also earn an industry credential so that when they do earn their high school diploma, they have a job opportunities post-graduation. But you're correct, they are similar and so we're looking to combine them and take the best aspects from both programs, which is currently in progress.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Young, any more questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Dr. Epp. Congratulations. This is great news. All teams working together. Dr. Harris, congratulations. Mr. Hughes, congratulations. Thank you so very much. As we move forward, this is the kind of news we want to hear. But I hope when we do come back to school in September, that we continue with these strategies, continue to knock on the doors, continue to have that partnership with the city to make sure that we're reaching every child. This is much better than what we've had in the past, but I don't want us to get comfortable. So thank you for all that you have done to our counselors, our teachers, our administrators. Well done. That's something worth celebrating. Thank you so much. All right, we're ready for the next item on the agenda, number five, budgetary items. 5.01, received for adoption fiscal year 2022 budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am thrilled to bring to you our FY22 budget this evening. I'm going to share my screen just to walk you through a couple of the numbers. So here is the highlight on our operating budget. So this is the day-to-day operations of the school system. We are seeing roughly $16 million increase, which is just shy of 5%, very exciting. Since the board approved the budget last in February, the state updated its allocation to RPS. And as we did talk about some weeks ago, that additional money we are recommending go toward increasing our teacher raise from 2% to 3%. So the lion's share of that additional state funding would go towards the teacher raise. Second thing we are proposing to do with the additional state money is to move some of the positions that we were going to fund with federal dollars, that we move those on to state dollars so that we won't have a cliff when the federal funding goes away. And then last, we have added in the three new board-approved construction positions per the board's guidance. So those are all taken care of as well. You can see some historical data there over the last few years. That's the operating budget. Everything else remains as is as the board approved it in February. And on the CIP side, the maintenance side, we're receiving just over two million dollars. And we have articulated the list of projects that would be funded by that two million in the budget books on page one hundred and sixty-five for all of those details. And so with that, I present you the budget for adoption, and I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Mr. Young, do we have anyone listed?
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, I have a couple of questions. The first question, does the additional funding, the five million that you spoke about, and the additional positions, does that include the seventeen missing custodial positions? That's the first question. The second question is also in this budget demonstration, does that include an additional AP position for alternate ed? The third question is, can you talk about why there is such a difference for school maintenance? I'm assuming that's a decrease of forty-seven point five percent for school maintenance.
Sure, let me, let me go in reverse order. Yeah. The school maintenance dollars is really contingent upon the amount of funding that the city has every year. This year was a, a low revenue year, so we expected a lower amount of funding than we have received in previous years, particularly since the city was trying to fund a number of other pressing priorities, and we have significant federal funding for maintenance this year. So we're able to offset any decline there. On the other two items, everything that was in the budget that the board approved in February is covered in this budget or through the federal funding that we have discussed previously. So those seventeen custodians are taken care of. The, any additional positions that we had included in alternative programs is included. Nothing has been changed from what the board approved. We just shifted some of those positions from the federal funds to the state funds to make sure that they are secure going forward. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Young, any other questions? I don't see Mr. Young. Mr. Young, are you there?
Madam Chair, I apologize. This man, Ms. Page.
No problem. Ms. Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Superintendent Cameras, thank you. First, I would like to thank you for this information. And I do have questions. So these three positions that the board has requested, has the Department of Education approved those positions?
Those positions are under review by the Department of Education, so as soon as we hear back from them, I will, of course, let you all know.
So my next question. You had shared with during the compact meeting that we are possibly looking at at least ten more positions to effectively support this construction procurement effort? Is that correct?
I believe so, ultimately. Again, we want to continue to do our research. I think it's very important that we get the Director of School Construction hired and onboard and, you know, work with that individual to build out the team. So I think a good first step is to get these three individuals, get their positions approved, posted, hired, and then we can continue to build from there.
Okay, so my question, another question. How are these positions, are they sustainable? Because I know based on the skill set of these positions, the salaries, I'm sure rather large, so again, are they sustainable?
Well, we have put them in state recurring dollars, so yes. Unless the board, you know, were to not approve those positions going forward, yes, they are sustainable at this time. You know, of course, as we add positions, we'll have to make some trade-offs in next year's budget, but those three positions, yes, they are secure in the budget.
So they are sustainable. So based on these positions, what have we eliminated, or what have we sacrificed to support these, these positions? What have we sacrificed in that, within our school division? You know, resources that our students need? Our teachers, what have we eliminated, or what have we sacrificed?
Well, it's, it's a little bit hard to answer. I mean, everything is a trade-off in our budget, right? So every additional dollar you spend on one thing is one less dollar you spend on something else. So I do want to be clear, we did not cut anything to put these positions in place. This was additional money that we received from the state, and so we thought it appropriate, given the board's direction, to go ahead and build these positions into the budget. But, you know, every thousand dollars you spend on, you know, position A is a thousand dollars you don't spend on position B. So these are always trade-offs, and we will continue to confront those trade-offs as we move forward.
Right, so you say trade-offs. So trade-offs that could be a detriment to the school division, our children? Correct?
I, I hesitate to to weigh in on that. I've been clear about my perspective about how I think we should use our funds. This was not one that I thought was a priority, but it is a priority of the board, and so I'm acting upon the board's directive.
Right, I, I get that, but again, are we willing to trade off when we know there are many resources or supports that are needed for our students to be successful? So I just, I just want to be on the record for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Page, for asking those questions. Thank you so much. Mr. Young, do we have anyone else?
I believe Ms. Door is prepared to make a motion, Madam Chair.
All right, Ms. Door, if there are not any other questions, Ms. Door, please proceed.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to receive for adoption the fiscal twenty-two-year budgets, twenty-twenty-two-year budgets. The general fund budget at three hundred and forty-seven million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. The special revenue fund budget at one hundred and thirty-three million, thirty-two thousand and seventy-seven dollars. And the capital improvement fund budget of twenty-one million, twenty-two point one million dollars.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, Ms. Page?
Ms. Page?
Okay.
Thank you very much. We're ready for discussion. Any questions, debate?
Madam Chair, I see Ms. Gibson.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move to amend the motion on the table to revise the positions, the three positions for new construction from five hundred thousand dollars to be four hundred thousand dollars, which I believe to be in line with standard rates. And to use the remaining hundred thousand dollars to fund an additional auditor position for, to report to the school board.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, Ms. Page and the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Um, I want to hear what the superintendent has to say first, before I ask my question.
Superintendent Cameras?
Sure, I just wanted to make sure that I am excited to do the work the board has charged the administration to do in terms of construction. I would ask that the board not, I would ask that the board resource that work appropriately, and I think there's a lot of unknowns as we go down this path in terms of costs, not just salaries, but we also think about benefits. There may need to be sort of a clerical assistant-type position as well as we build out that team to help move the work forward, so I humbly ask that you maintain the five hundred thousand so that we can do the work we have been charged to do. I will deliver to the very best of my ability. I just ask that you give me the resources to do the work that you're asking me to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Ms. Page?
Yes, thank you. So my question is, where is the data to support the decrease? The allocation? Where is the data that supports this? This motion? Because we are making decisions, and we do not have any data to support this decision, so that we, the board, can make an informed decision. And we've directed the administration, the superintendent, to create these three positions that we must get approval from the Department of Education. So, again, my question is, where is the data so that this board can make an informed decision regarding this motion?
Excuse me, Ms. Page. So when you stated this motion, are you speaking of the amendment, amended motion?
Yes, amendment. I'm sorry. Where is the data?
Thank you. Mr. Young, anyone else listed?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. White, then Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Rizzi, in that order.
Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Cameras, I just want to ensure that we have all the resources that we need for all our schools to ensure that it's covered in both budgets. Do we have everything that our schools would need?
I would venture to say we're several billion dollars away from getting everything I believe our schools need. I think the budget that we've put forward is a strong budget that addresses our current position coming out of COVID, but I'm going to always advocate for more.
But we do have the resources for our students to actually return back to school safely. That's my concern, our, our students return safely with the resources that are needed based on the COVID funds and the additional money that we receive. I don't want it to be looking like, I hear what different board members are saying, like, we are sorting the resources, and I want to ensure that all of our students are going to receive the resources that they need. And I know different schools need different resources, but I want to ensure that they have those resources to start school.
Yes, Board Member White, I believe they do.
Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Am I next? I don't know, I'm kind of losing track here.
Ms. Rizzi, the floor is yours.
Thank you. You know, to answer the data question, I think this works both ways. You know, if we need to see data in order to reduce this number, we also need to see data that will justify this number. And so as soon as we can get details about projections for costs for these three positions, I'd really appreciate it. I think the board could use that data either way on both ends.
If I may, if I could ask Ms. Hudasko to share some information on that front, I think it might be illuminating.
Okay.
Sure, thank you. Based on our current salaries with benefits, the average manager salary with benefits is one hundred forty-four thousand. So there were two manager positions put forward, so that was about three hundred. And then our average director salary with benefits, again, benefits are about a third, is one sixty-seven. So that total would have been four sixty-seven, and we rounded it up in this to five hundred.
Thank you, Ms. Hudasko.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a matter of protocol, I, I might, I request, so I, I put a motion on the table, and by protocol, there, you know, the, the motion was not even seconded before
That's right.
... argument about it.
That's right. I saw, I saw that afterwards. So wait a minute, we're running to discussion. You're correct.
And so I would request that we allow that process to continue before, before going into discussion. And on this matter, you know, I'm, I'm, would be fine to remove the motion from the table. I do think that the, the numbers that Ms. Hudasko has shared don't reflect what we've used as budget numbers in, in our most recent adopted budget for the, those level positions, nor do they reflect the standard, you know, budgets for, for those industry-wide. But I think what I would like to see happen is that once we have hired those positions, I request that the administration, you know, return with where we end up on that line item amount. And then perhaps we could, at that time, look to make a budget transfer amount to allow the addition of an auditor, because I know that that team does desperately need additional support. Thank you.
So right now, we have the motion to accept the budget as presented by Ms. Door and seconded by Ms. Page. Then we have a motion that needs to be seconded to amend the motion that Ms. Gibson noted to rather than the five hundred thousand, to place it down to four hundred thousand, but they just
I just rescinded that motion.
Stated that you wanted to change that?
Draw.
Ms. Gibson? Leave it as it is, Ms. Gibson, but I didn't hear you.
I'm withdrawing that motion.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okey-dokey, I got you. So now the only motion we have on the floor is the one that was originally done by Ms. Door and Ms. Page. Revising agreement, okay, thank you. So are there any other questions or discussion before we move forward with voting? Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question was clarified with Ms. Millie. I'm sorry, Ms. Lilly.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so we're ready for the vote. Ms. Lilly?
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so very much, and I see that we had another voter, a little dog barking in the background. We heard that as well, so thank you very much, you also, very much for moving forward on that. All right, the next act, action item is six point zero one, received for action FY twenty-two, salary schedule and tuition rates.
Thank you. I'm going to have Ms. Lee speak to this item.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Cameras, Madam Chair, school board members. The proposed salary schedule for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year is reflective of the adopted budget, which includes a three percent raise for all employees and a one point one seven percent step increase for teachers, principals, assistant principals, nurses, bus operators, bus monitors, custodians, and instructional assistants. We respectfully request your approval of the proposed salary schedule. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Lee. Thank you so very much, Ms. Lee. Either, all right, either we can get a motion or we can move forward with questions. I think first, Ms. Young, we have questions listed in the chat?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lee, I have a question if, if you don't mind. For the new salary schedule, because I didn't see the one previously, like from 2020, does this new salary schedule include office associates, one, office associates, two, and/or office associates, three, moving to 12 months?
Office associates. There are some 12-month office associates. Yes, that is correct, ma'am.
Okay, so my question was, did they move to 12 months? Not that they were already 12 months. Did they move in this salary schedule to 12 months? For example, they were 11 months until July the 1st or June the 30th, and on July the 1st, their contract changes to 12 months. Do we have any of that? Do we have any of those scenarios?
No, ma'am. We did not move all office associates en masse to 12 months.
Okay. And those that were moved to 12 months, starting a new fiscal year, July 1st, were already notified, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And I'm prepared to make a motion if there is, if there are any other questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Do we have anyone else listed?
Not as, not as of yet, no ma'am.
Please proceed, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the FY20, FY22 salary schedule and tuition rates as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. White, can we hear you?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's a move by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Mrs. White. Any discussion? Ms. Young, anyone listed?
No, ma'am.
Then we're ready to vote. Madam Attorney?
Ms. Dour?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so very much. Let's move forward with 6.02, received for action FY22 reelection list.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you again, Madam Chair. The reelection list for fiscal year 2022 lists the names of all current employees. We are proposing to reelect to receive a contract. We are prepared to publish contracts for all employees on the reelection list tomorrow and respectfully request your approval of the list. Thank you.
You've heard the report from Mrs. Lee. Is there any discussion, questions, excuse me? Or, Mr. Young, do we have any questions before we move forward with the motion?
No, ma'am, but I do see Dr. Harris Mohammed with a motion.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Please proceed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the FY22 reelection list as presented.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll gladly
Okay.
I think we heard from Mr. Young first, the second. Thank you, Ms. Page. So it's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Mr. Young to move forward with that action. Are you ready to vote? If there's no discussion further. Ms. Lily?
Ms. Dour?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Lily. We can move forward now to 6.04, received for action, the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to make budget transfers to balance all accounts for FY21.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe we, I believe we have 5.03 first, if I'm not mistaken.
I skipped that. Oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I checked it off. Thank you so much. Received for action, the personnel actions. Thank you. Re-election and personnel. Thank you, Mr. Young. All right. Let's address 6.03. Is that Ms. Lee again?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. This evening, the talent office brings forth the following personnel actions for your consideration. The nomination of seven employees, the change of contract of 72 employees, the resignation of 67 employees, the furlough of six employees, the returning from leave of two employees, the retirement of 30 employees, and the non-renewals of six employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, for providing the information for personnel actions 6.03. Mrs., there are questions listed. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Lee, I have a question and then possibly a part two to that question. Do we have an update on the percentage of exit interviews conducted by Richmond Public Schools Human Resources Department? And if not, how soon can you provide to the board an update on those exit interviews?
We do not currently have an updated percentage and I can provide update in June, ma'am.
Thank you. Was that it, Dr. Harris Mohammed? Get another question? You're good? Okay. Mr. Young, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. White?
Ms. White, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Lee, I had a question. I'm just curious about this, based on such a large number. But I did also see, I guess, an email or maybe just a statement of teachers could transfer. How does that fit into your total? And do you have any type of data that shows why teachers would be transferring?
Um, yes, ma'am. So teachers are currently able to transfer until the transfer period ends on June 15. Teachers may request the transfer. These are not administrative transfers, ma'am. And then in terms of the, the data, ma'am, are you asking about current vacancies or?
Yes. Are they allowed to, based on those transfers? Are they transferring due to vacancies or they're transferring for some other reasons?
They are transferring, ma'am, because there is a vacancy in another location that they're interested in, in moving to. So typically, it's the same position but a new location.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Young, do we have anyone else? Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Ms. Gibson, excuse me, Madam Chair. Ms. Gibson is on there as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have a question and a comment. The question, or I guess the comment first. You know, I, I think it's incredibly concerning that we're seeing this high number of resignations. And, and so I'm eager to hear from the administration. Obviously, teacher retention is something that I have spoken about for some time and, and I'm eager to hear, you know, thoughts, thoughts on the number of resignations this year. Certainly, this was a unique year for the district and for, you know, the world. But I, I'm eager to hear, you know, thoughts in terms of how, how we did this year regarding teacher retention in, in light of everything. I'm concerned because there's been, you know, on top of that, there's been quite a lot of change. We talked about the new curriculum and, and I, and I can't help but wonder, you know, how those changes might have impacted the, the retention numbers this year. The question that I have is regarding the new FTEs. I requested that when we, when there are new FTEs included in the personnel action items, that we know where those are being funded from. And so my question regarding the custodian FTEs, I'm wondering, what, what budget are those positions in?
Um, yeah. So the custodian FTEs were approved with the ESER funds, ma'am. And with regard to the resignations and retirements, those, we have been bundling through, throughout the spring. We typically publish resignations and retirements that are effective at the end of the school year at, at the same time that we are preparing our reelection list. So to prepare our reelection list as well as to do all the backend work to prepare contracts for publishing tomorrow, that, that is why we have an increase on, on tonight's personnel actions, ma'am.
Thank you.
And, and if I may, Ms. Lee, I believe the number is trending down as compared to last previous years. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. In particular, in just reviewing the teacher data, at this time last year, we had a total of 210 teacher vacancies and about half fulfilled. At this time, we have a total of 153 vacancies and about 48% of those vacancies have been filled. So we are actually trending in a more positive direction this year.
Uh, thank you for that. I do want to note, I think that having, whether the vacancies have been filled is, is, is different than teacher retention, but I am thankful for those, for that information. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up question?
Please.
Ms. Lee, as I understand it, per our earlier conversation, the number of resignations is down as well. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It is compared to last year. Last year, at this time, we had approximately 70. And that is quite comparable to actually what we have right now. So we are trending down a bit and agree, I just wanted to, to know that, Ms. Gibson, I, I do agree, this is different and yet also in relation to the teacher retention discussion that I hope to have in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Any other discussion, questions, comments, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
We are ready to receive a motion? For 6.03? Anyone in the chat, Mr. Young?
No. Yes, there is, from Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Please proceed, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the personnel actions as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Young, is there a second?
I will gladly second, Madam Chair.
All right. It's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Mr. Young to receive 6.03 personnel actions. Thank you. Now we move to 6.04, received for
Madam Chair, excuse me, we need to take
The vote. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. It must be nine o'clock. Nope.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dour?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so very much. 6.04, received for action, the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to make budget transfers to balance all accounts for FY21.
A little bit, little awkward for me to introduce this one, but typically, the board every year authorizes the superintendent to make those transfers so that we can close out the fiscal year with a fully balanced budget. And I hereby request the same authority from the board this year as well. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Young. Do we have any questions or comments regarding 6.04?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, this question may be for Ms. Lily because it's more of a procedural question. Is there a way that the board can, we may have a policy that currently demonstrates what I'm asking, but is it necessary? So let me ask it this way first. Is it necessary for the board to go through this process at the, or every year? Can we, can, can we have a policy or procedures that just grants the superintendent to do that? I'm just asking that question.
Sure. Moving forward, yes, you could have a policy and, and, you know, that's the board's wish to give the, give the authority to the superintendent to make those budget transfers at the end of each year. I, I would look, I was trying to look quickly, but we can look, I just know historically, the approval has been done at the meeting, but you certainly can have a policy and it would eliminate the need for having this item each year.
I was just asked, I was curious because
So yes, you, you could have it. I don't believe but, um, you know, in the future, that's something, and when you look at your, your policy revisions, you can incorporate.
Okay, thank you. And if there, I'm sorry, follow-up, Madam Chair, if there aren't any additional questions, I'll be more than happy to make the motion as well. Oh, never mind. Some motion in the chat.
Okay, I think we, Mr. Young, where are we with the motion?
Yes, ma'am. I believe Ms. Dour is prepared to make a motion.
All right, Ms. Dour, the floor is yours.
I move to authorize the superintendent to make budget transfers to balance all accounts for fiscal year 21.
Is there a second?
Second.
No.
All right. Ms. Jones, Mrs. Dour made the motion. Mrs. Jones seconded in order for us to move forward with the superintendent for 6.04 regarding budget transfers. Are you ready to vote? Roll call, please. Ms. Lily?
Ms. Dour?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
abstain.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight zero.
Thank you so very much. And we will now move forward to 6.05, received for action, the contract for new budget and HR platform.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Burke, or pardon me, Madam Chair.
You're fine. Fine. Mr. Young, do we have another comment? Something flashed up?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. For procedural, would it be eight and one abstention? Or eight, zero, one, or I'm just asking, okay.
It would be, right, you do, I'm sorry. Yeah, you do not count abstentions in the vote, so it would be eight zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will note, we will note in the record
In the record, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Lee, please go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Cameras, would you mind sharing your screen? Thank you. Good evening. Per action 5.1, in our dreams for RPS strategic plan, a committee has been working since the fall to select a new budget, finance, and HR platform, otherwise known as an ERP or Enterprise Resource Planning System. Our current ERP was created in the 1980s and is simply not robust not robust enough to meet our division's data needs. There are several challenges to utilizing our current ERP. Most significantly, the difficulty of gathering accurate data. After evaluating eight vendor proposals, the committee has selected Alio's ERP system as that system meets or exceeds all of the technical and functional requirements. The proposed, my apologies, the vendor that proposed Alio's ERP is Weidenhammer and the total cost of the software and implementation support is five hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars. We respectfully request your approval of this contract. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you so very much. Any questions? Of Ms. Lee? Mr. Young? Anyone listed?
Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. White. The floor is yours.
Yes, Ms. Lee, I might have missed this. Who was the consultant? Do you have any consultants for this?
No, ma'am. We we published an RFP in January of last year, I believe it was, for vendors. So Weidenhammer is an organization that will be helping to implement the software.
So who will be doing the testing?
The the testing that.
Who will be doing the testing? Who will be the, who will be doing the testing at RPS? Who will be responsible for the testing at RPS?
So Weidenheimer is the vendor that would be, will be helping us to implement the software, ma'am.
I understand that you say implement, but when you have a new system, someone has to do the testing to make sure that 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 system does work. So I'm sure you're going to have someone in charge of it to make sure that that is the testing or that's the system that you want, or if that's you want to modify. Would that be you?
We have a committee that is working together that is comprised of members from both the talent office and the operations office. We'll be working in tandem. We have not yet identified the lead on the implementation, but I certainly will be helping to lead as well, Ms. Gonzalez, to implement this software. Yes, ma'am.
So you, you're asking us to agree to a system that you're putting in, but you don't have anyone, not a designated person on the implementation is still in the makings. Is that what you're telling me, Ms. Lee?
If I, if I may, Madam Chair.
Please.
We we have, Ms. Lee and Ms. Gonzalez are my points on the implementation, as this is largely a finance and an HR system. We have multiple people within both of those offices who will be extensively involved in the testing of the platform. I assure you, the ensuring that it goes smoothly is one of my highest priorities. So I will ensure that it is tested properly from both a finance perspective and a talent perspective.
I have a second question. Mr. Cameras, also in this amount of money, is there does this include the maintenance in case they need maintenance or anything? Is there a warranty or maintenance on this?
There are maintenance fees, you know, going forward that are much, much less than the initial implementation cost. And we, I I believe much of that is outlined in in the contract, though we don't, you know, do multi-year commitments, given our purchasing approach. So this is for the initial implementation and support for that implementation.
So this is for the initial implementation, you say?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Are there any other questions or comments, Mr. Young?
I don't believe we have any additional questions, but I do see a couple of folks prepared to make a motion. I saw Ms. Page, I think, entered a motion.
All right, Ms. Page, the floor is yours. Ms. Page, you must be muted. We can't hear you there.
Sorry.
No problem. Ms. Page, we still can't hear you there.
Okay, let me try again. I think Dr. Shonda, Harris Mohammed put it in the chat first. Am I correct? Yeah, I did, but you have written it out, so I'll go ahead and read. Yeah, I'll go ahead and read what you have there. I move, I move to approve the contract for the new budget and HR platform. And I'll second.
All right, this has been moved and properly seconded to receive for contract the new budget and HR platform. Are there any questions? A debate? Madam Lilly, we are ready to vote.
Ms. Dorr?
Yep.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Abstain.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
I believe.
Did you ask Ms. Dorr, did Ms. Dorr vote?
Yes, motion passes six two, no, excuse me, six, one.
Right, that's what I have, and two abstentions.
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Now, so that has been approved. We will move forward to six point zero six, receive for action, the modified school year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two bell schedule.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, are you able to share your screen, or would you like me to? Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration is bringing to the board for approval revised start and end times for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. A few highlights. One, River City Middle School would operate on the high school schedule and a subset, a small number of elementary schools will need to operate on the middle school schedule as was currently in place pre-pandemic due to bus routes. I wanted to also note that we are planning to have extended day available for our students to account for any concerns about childcare. And high school students who work are able to apply for a waiver from their fourth period by gaining permission from their counselor principal and and submitting that to the central office without jeopardize. They can do that for up to four semesters without jeopardizing their ability to earn an advanced diploma. Happy to take questions.
Mr. Young, are there any questions in the chat?
Not as of yet, but I suspect there will be momentarily.
We'll give everybody a few minutes to respond.
Madam Chair, Ms. White?
Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Dr. Epp, my question again, that I had, that I had asked the last time. Do we have enough bus drivers?
I would defer to Mr. Cameras and Ms. Gonzalez on that. This is the same, oh, sorry, go ahead.
At this current moment, no, but we will. And we are working to develop whatever incentives are necessary to ensure that we do have the necessary number of bus drivers. This is a issue that is shared across the state, frankly, across the country. But we do feel confident that we will be in a position to execute on the schedule. And I would not have brought it to this board if I did not believe we would be able to do so.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Young, any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Dorr, then Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Dorr?
Hi, um, thank you for bringing this for our vote. I'm wondering what supports we can put in place for affordable after-school care? Because I believe that this will, in some cases, require that districts, especially the elementary or schools at the elementary school level, extend aftercare for at least another hour. And so does that, do we know if that impacts pricing for families? And what conversations have we had with Parks and Rec and other after-care providers at our schools to ensure there's no budgetary impact on families? And second question is, this may result in elementary-age students waiting for the bus at, when it's dark out. And so wondering if we had done any thinking about how we make sure that those kids feel safe while waiting for the bus stop? And then three, how does this impact high school sports as it gets dark much earlier in the winter? And we have limited lighting on our field. I say all this to say, I think we can figure all this out. But if we don't have all of these questions answered today, I would request that we have a follow-up report on some of these concerns to make sure that we make this transition seamless for families with no budget impact and so that kids feel, kids feel safe and supported.
All right. We're going to have a discussion on that, Mr. Cameras.
Dr. Epp, can you respond to this?
Sure. The, on your first question about aftercare, we are in conversations with our partners around extended day. As you, as I think you all are aware, we need to provide a robust extended day anyway to recover learning loss and 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 keep time for enrichment. And so I believe, you know, with our addition of federal dollars, we'll be able to provide robust after-care services in partnership with with our traditional providers. So rather than running separate programs, we we plan to work with our providers to outline our specific needs and have them give us proposals on how they can partner with us for extended day. So those conversations are in the works. But our hope is that this actually allows us to provide both extended academic support for students who need it as well as enrichment for students and still be home at a reasonable hour. And really helping us tackle our literacy challenge, which is, as you all know from previous data, is a significant need that we have at the elementary level. In terms of the nighttime, you know, the it being dark in the winter times, you know, we know that most younger students are escorted by an adult to the bus, to the bus stop. So our hope is that we would continue that. We can certainly, you know, take a look at our routes to, you know, make sure we're getting as close as possible to houses and such. So I'd have to come back to you with more on that. And on the athletics, we have discussed that. That has come up in our conversations, in particular with high school principals. And, you know, athletics, while they're, while athletics may be going late on one end, it actually opens up opportunities for early practice, like morning practice as well, and gives coaches and and school teams much more flexibility with multiple club sports at a given time. Additionally, you know, we can learn, we can learn from our peers in our surrounding counties, given that their high school schedule runs very similar to what we're proposing.
Ms. Dorr, any follow?
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Young.
Or the Madam Chair?
Go right ahead, Mr. Young. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Dorr, any follow-up questions?
Yeah, sorry. I was just asking, I was just going to say, I would love to put in a formal request to have an update on our aftercare supports at a future meeting.
Absolutely.
And, sorry, are elementary children waiting at bus stops and are walking to school in the dark a potential other partner to engage as safe routes to schools to see if they have any ideas about how to mitigate this?
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Young? And thank you, Mr. Young, so much.
Yes, ma'am, my pleasure. Yes, ma'am. Persons in the following order, Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Rizzi, then Ms. White, then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
All right, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I, I have significant concern about this. Not the change, but the way that we're going about it. You know, we were talking about changing the calendar and 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 the reason why we did not move to go to a full-year calendar was because there was not sufficient time to make a change before the start of the school year. That was back in January or February. Now, it's, we're later down the road and we're talking about making a change to the school start times, which will impact every single student in the district and every single family in the district in a very tangible way and staff. So so it is simply too late to be making a change this significant when when parents and families and staff are already adjusting to a huge amount of change. And so, and and there's been no survey. You know, I don't, how do, we don't, we have not engaged families on this discussion. Furthermore, I I have significant concerns over the change, you know, not just the start and the end time, but the times in between. You know, changing the schedules to potentially shorten times for for science and history and other classes. This is incredibly concerning to me, particularly as a parent of students that really love science. And so, you know, while I know that there is a need to to get our scores up, you know, the best way to get our scores up is to ensure that our students love learning. And 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 I have incredible concern that this is not the way to do it. In fact, I mean, this is, you know, we're talking about scripted curriculums and, you know, all of these things are completely contrary to what I think our schools should look like. And so there are so many unanswered questions. I I appreciate the question that my colleague, Ms. White, brought up regarding the bus drivers. And I have also requested updates in terms of what does this look like from a transportation standpoint? We've received no plan in terms of, you know, what time our kids are going to be needing to get onto the bus and and how are our routes going to be changed as as a result of this? You know, I appreciate the question by my colleague, Ms. Dorr, regarding the, you know, whether it is even light outside. And there is no outside partner that can change that. And I and I don't believe that we know for sure that all of our students or a majority of our students are escorted. There's no way for us to know this. And, you know, the the reality of this is that we are sometimes looking at at good ideas, but we're just not going about them in the right way. And I don't understand it. You know, I don't know how many times I'm going to have to say, you know, we we should have been doing this sooner. But here we are again. I brought up earlier my concern with teacher retention. I mean, we have, we've, we've gotten teachers to commit, but we weren't even ready to commit to what time they were going to have to come to work. Something is not right. And so I I urge my colleagues to to either, to to either defer this vote until there is more information, although I I question whether or not we'll be able to answer all of these questions in two weeks' time. But 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 this is simply not the time to be doing this. And I say this both as a board member and as a parent who's stressed, who's stressed, who, you know, I've, I might, you know, I've got kids that have lost more than one teacher mid-year. I'm concerned about what next year is going to look like in so many different ways. And so let's, let's focus on 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 getting back to school. We have enough things that are going to be changing that this is not something we need to be throwing into the mix, not even a month before the end of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Were you ready to make a motion? Did you wanna make a motion not to move forward at this time?
What? That's a great idea, Ms. Door. I motion that the, uh, that the school schedule, that the school start and end time remain as they are, uh, are currently, I guess. I, I, basically what I would suggest is that we go back to the school start times that we had the last time that we were in person.
So your motion is to keep the sched, schedule as it is?
That we, that they, uh, that for they, I'll make it formal, that for.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
The administration has brought a proposal to the board. I would request that the, that the board vote on the proposal. Voted up or voted down, but vote on the proposal, please.
I, I.
One moment, one moment, please, one moment, please, Ms. 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 Gibson, one moment, Ms. Lilly? Where are you, Mr. Lilly? Clarify how we should move forward. Because the discussion, we didn't have a motion in place, we were discussing, asking questions, but now we're, our discussion is turning towards one way or the other, beyond that, so what's?
Well, I thought we were entertaining questions and comments from board members around the proposal as it was presented. If there is a, and so you can continue down the path of entertaining questions and comments. The other piece is, if there is another motion that's made, whether it be for the proposal on the table or another proposal, you will have to entertain that as that comes.
So this is two, will be two different motions? So it's out of order then, the request to go ahead and move forward? We need to first vote on what Mr. Cameras stated, is that what you're stating?
No, I stated that you were going down the path of entertaining questions, that's what, questions and comments from board members, right? On the proposal, they were asking questions, I think you can continue that. Comment, right, same thing. If a board member makes a motion during that time, which we weren't there, but anyway, they, we weren't there at first, but, um, there is a motion on the floor at this particular time. And you have to entertain that motion, whether there be, well, in the chat now, there is a motion on the floor. You have to entertain that motion, um, and, and allow that to play out, whether it's gonna be voted up or down. And then you go back to, um, in, to the discussion, if necessary. Ms. Rizzi asked a question, are we ending the discussion? Basically, at that point, there was no motion on the floor, Ms. Rizzi. And so certainly, there, there was a period of questioning the answers that has not been completed, but there was no formal debate period that was open at that particular time. However, now, right, however, now there is.
Given was more in the form of debate, and we hadn't gotten to that.
Right, but, yeah, you, you guys ebb and flow and the practice of, you know, whether you have questions, you allow for questions before a motion is entertained. Sometimes you can go straight to a motion, have a second and then discussion, but you guys also entertain questions prior to a motion being made. However, there is, there is a motion that's in the chat box now that you need to entertain and, whether there's a second or not, we need to play that out.
So then the discussion will continue as listed, after the motion is on the floor?
Correct, you will, you will entertain the motion now. And, and rather than me saying it, Ms. Gibson's gonna have to say her motion and whoever seconds it has to second it publicly. And then you will open up the debate on the motion.
All right, on the floor, at this time, we have a motion on the floor made by Ms. Gibson, seconded by, oh, Mr. Young.
I'd like to read the motion.
Ms. Motion, yeah, Ms. Gibson, that is motion, Ms. Gibson needs to make her motion.
Please.
So I would like, I'm gonna reword it just a little bit for clarity. So I motion that the district maintain school start times as existed in the 2019, 2020 school year for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, let's, um, continue with the vote, excuse me, before the vote discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, uh, we have in the following order, I believe this is still the following order, but if not relevant, I hope my colleagues will, will correct me. Next would be Ms. Rizzi, to be followed by Ms. White, then Dr. Harris Mohammed, then Ms. Door, and Ms. Page.
All right, Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, now, part of my comment, you know, I, I, I kind of drafted before we had this motion on the floor, but I still wanna ask, um, you know, I agree with my colleague, this does affect the daily lives of our, um, families, like every single day, um, so it's, it's a really important, it's a, it's a big deal. And I know there are actually a lot of unanswered questions, I also agree with that, you know, and my, you know, my belief is that we defer the year-round school decision, you know, to next year or actually to, to next year, because we argued that families needed some stability, some, um, you know, so, some familiarity, you know? They need not a whole lot of changes, right, to happen to them right after returning to school after this pandemic. I mean, they, they need that kind of peace where they know what to expect and they know what's happening. And, and we don't really, and, and my feelings is that we don't need to make major changes right now. But I do have a question, whether this passes or not, and this is for Dr. Epp. Will teachers have the opportunity to earn extra money by, um, participating in an extended day? You said we'd work with our partners, but you also mentioned teaching and, um, you know, working to like curb whatever learning loss exists. Are teachers going to have that opportunity to like earn extra money by participating in extended-day activities? Whether this passes or not, well, and then I do wanna know whether this passes, will we still have the extended-day opportunity? Or, or whether it doesn't pass, when it doesn't, or if it doesn't?
So on the teacher's side, yes, uh, we would certainly, uh, for our teachers who are interested and able, we would certainly, uh, want to have them participate in our extended day. After their contract, our requirements have been met. So that might mean they're only able to teach, you know, the second half of extended day, as they're closing out the, the part of the school day. To answer your second question, I do think the current schedule, uh, the 1920 schedule is prohibitive, uh, around, can be prohibitive when it comes to extended day because elementary, the elementary schedule currently ends around three, uh, ends at 3:45. So by the time kids are out, you know, it's four, four o'clock, which means if you're running a two-hour extended-day program, you're not leaving campus until six, getting home well after the dinner hour. Um, and so I think you, we can do it, I think it's hard, I think it will be harder for families to say yes to, given the hour for the little ones, where, where I think the biggest bang for buck for extended day, given our literacy needs, will be met by, um, starting the school day earlier extensive extended day, um, and still being home at a reasonable hour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, the next person is Mrs. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, Dr. Epp, um, I have several things, um, that is, I guess, that turn away me from this, you know, just agreeing to this, uh, proposal that you, um, that you want. I feel that our children need some normalization right now. I'm a parent and I know how it is, especially with, uh, single parents. And I keep hearing extended day after-school program, and I've had my children in both of them. So I know it is a long day and children come home and all they can do is eat and sleep. And we have a lot of bus drivers who are parents. And so that's long for them, just trying to get their children, um, dinner and in bed. And for the athletic programs that you have stated, early practices, I know we have specialty schools and they are early also. And I'm just, you know, athletes, some of them are, you know, they stay at home and they help out with their younger siblings to make sure. And I'm not just sure if we don't have buses, uh, bus drivers, we have plenty of buses, but bus drivers. How we can definitely, uh, make this happen? It seemed like a rush plan to me, and I'm not a real rush person, I like definite things. And I do also know about the, uh, childcare program in the evening. And one thing that really gets me is the parks of recreation. They do have a, they have a certain number that they do allow in parks of recreation. But my biggest thing is that we have Title I students that have moved to other schools. And parks of recreation was a lot cheaper for them, maybe $120 for that year round. Well, they may be going to a Title II school where it's $120 or $130 just to attend, um, the YMCA. Is that money in there for our budget to help those children out that needs, um, childcare in the evening? And I think these are things that we should be looking at. And my last final question is, this is a question, why do we have to start right now? Why can't this be done for the 2022 year-round plan? That's all my questions and comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Did you all want to respond to that?
Mr. Cameras, did you want to respond or did you want me to answer that last question?
You, you can answer that.
Well, now I'm blanking on the last question, I apologize. The reason to, uh, in terms of, I, as I shared, I can't speak specifically to the cost structure of the Y or Parks and Rec. We are certainly in conversations with them and, uh, want to take advantage of this moment in time where we do have funding to offset the cost of extended day, including, uh, working with our after-care partners. And we also have, we know that we have a big learning loss, um, to tackle. Um, and so I think in terms of, you know, why now? Families are already on a different schedule than they were a year ago. Um, and so we'd rather coming back, have it, you know, if we were gonna do this a year from now, do that now, because families are adjusting their schedule accordingly. I'm not sure I'm asked, answering your last question, though, I apologize. I tried to track all the way to the end, um, can you repeat your last question, ma'am?
That's okay, but I did have a question, you were saying, you, you, you made me have, think of another follow-up question because if we're talking about learner, learning loss, we have to make sure that we are addressing the issue of our Title I students. Because they have been moved, it's just like, it wasn't, you know, their decision, but they have been moved. And I do have some students that have been moved, and I do know the price of the after-school. So if there is not any allocations to subsidize them to stay after-school, and I'm, I'm sure their parents would need after-school programs. That's just like, um, you know, apples and bananas. You got something that is inexpensive, and then you have this group over here that is very, very expensive. Who's, who's looking out for those children? Cause we have to look out, cause you're talking about learning loss. So I'm looking at childcare program for all students that needs it, if they have to stay back, based on that transition that had happened with the, um, schools being, um, rezoned last year.
I think you're speaking to, um, a cost structure that Parks and Rec or the Y may offer, based on the school's Title I status. So a student, Title I does not follow a student, it's a school-wide status. However, I think you and I share the exact same interest, which is making sure all students, regardless of family ability to pay, have access to extended-day experiences. We, I will certainly raise this question with our partners in terms of their fee structure and how that is unique across different school designations. Uh, I'm not familiar with this distinction, so I'll, I will have to ask, uh, I will have to follow up and ask more questions and come back to you. But this administration is committed to making sure that, um, money is not a barrier to students receiving services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Epp, the educational partners that you are discussing and shared with us this evening, are they licensed and certified educators?
So there's a range of partners we work with, most of them provide enrichment. But many of them employ or have employed in the past our teachers and/or certified staff as we request. So for example, um, NextUp is a partner we utilize, and they would provide the enrichment portion, so STEM activities, uh, coding, those sorts of things. And we would hire either our staff or other certified personnel for tutoring, uh, or academic interventions. And, and for the students who, for certain academic needs, but then also, uh, hire part-time tutors who we train, who may be, um, retired educators, college students and the like that may not have an endorsement. So we do not, every single person that works our extended day, that does not have a credential. But for students who are getting certain types of academic services, we would make sure where appropriate they do.
Follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Sure, go right ahead.
Thank you, and, and excuse me, this is more of a statement. I, I think that, um, because we have often talked about the past few months, the learning loss, the delay that we see in some of our students and probably will see, and our students is most likely, some of our students will, will occur some learning loss on some level. I just would think that if we're bringing in partners to increase the improvement of our data on all levels, not just math and reading or coding, all of those individuals would be licensed and certified because of the need that we have with our students. And surely, um, partners, I am a strong advocate for partners with school divisions because they, um, provide a substance that a lot of our students, particularly in high poverty areas, may not receive, uh, because maybe a lack of resource or two in the school. But I just would like for us to think about that, because if we have consistently, and, and your office has, I believe, consistently provided data to the board in terms of, you know, where we are right now. You, you've provided us those charts, and then when we ask for additional data, you come forth with that additional data, and that data demonstrates that there is some concern, but it also has demonstrated that we have grown in many areas. I just would think that we would have licensed and certified staff in front of our children, even in an enrichment timeframe. So that's my comment, but thank you so much, Dr. Epp.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Door.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We say we want to do more to address learning loss, but we don't do anything to adjust the calendar for in-person this year, and we don't do anything to adjust for the calendar next year. We say we don't wanna rush things, and yet we, we make a vote in the late hour to in-source an $800 million facilities budget that has been a giant distraction. At some point, we have to do something, I believe we're in an unprecedented year. Learning loss has undeniably happened, we're in a crisis, and I am worried that we are becoming a board of inaction. Changing school start times to start later for high school students is undeniably good for our older kids, plus it allows us to have more time for enriching after-school time for our younger kids. So, um, I will plan to vote no on this motion, and then I will introduce the motion to adopt the proposal as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Door, Ms. Page? I know she was having technical problems going in and out. Ms. Page, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't see you, but I hear you. Okay, there you are, thank you, please, you have a comment, a question?
No. I'm, I'm good.
Okay, all right, Mr. Young, anyone else regarding the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Intended.
All right, Mr. Cameras?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I'm respectfully asking.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm respectfully asking the board to uh vote no on the uh motion that is on the table. Um, I believe uh it is incumbent upon us to do everything we possibly can to be responsive to all of the unfinished learning from this past year. Um, I understand the board's uh decision to defer the year round. Um, this is a much smaller measure that will have significant benefit for our children. The brain science on this is unequivocal. And we would be uh violating everything that the American Academy for Pediatrics says uh if we do not make these changes. We also know that with our federal funding, we are going to have significant aftercare, which will include significant uh support for unfinished learning, which is going to be critical for our children. We have plans in place to address any students that need to leave early on the high school level for work. We uh will address any other concerns uh that have been raised, all legitimate. But I implore the board to uh vote no on this resolution um and then support the resolution to change these times. It is the right thing for kids. And we've talked a lot about keeping the main thing the main thing. This is one way we can continue to keep the main thing the main thing. And uh I respectfully request uh your support in that way. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cameras. Is anyone else? Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to state um that to to use such a strong word as violating suggestive research, there are many school divisions that are not on this current schedule, so I don't want to say that anyone that is not on the schedule is violating suggestive research. Um, I I don't want to belate, you know, to delay or um keep the conversation going, but I'm very concerned about the choice of words because Richmond Public Schools is not the only school division. Currently, I'm talking in right now in time, that's not on that schedule. So, Mr. Cameras, I hear your heart and I understand what you're saying. But I don't want anyone in the audience to think that because we don't agree or some board members may not vote for this is in violation of something because we're not. So I just wanted to ma- I want to make that clear. Um, so thank you so very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right, so we're ready to vote. Ms. Gibson, you want to repeat your um one more time, please? Your motion?
Sure. I motion that the district maintain uh is, I'm sorry, I changed the language in there, so I must remember how I wrote it. Where, I'm sorry, how I worded it before. I motion that the district maintain school start times as existed in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
And we know was seconded by?
Second.
I know somebody already seconded, who seconded earlier?
Ms. White.
Ms. White, right, already seconded. All right, we're ready to vote. There's no more discussion. Mrs. Lilly?
Ms. Door?
No.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Motion fails five-four.
Thank you very much. Moving forward to six point zero seven, received for action board travel and district activity requests.
There. Madam, uh, Madam? Yes, yes, ma'am. I believe Ms. Door has a motion.
I'm sorry. Right, she did state that. Okay, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Door. The floor is yours. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two bell schedule adjustment as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Door. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll gladly second. Uh, I see Ms. Page. She, I think, beat me to it in the chat.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Door to receive the action as listed and seconded by Ms. Page. Any questions? Then we're ready to vote. Ms. Lilly?
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
No.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes five-four.
Thank you so much. Now moving forward to six point zero seven, received for action travel and district activity requests. Ms. Lilly, do you have any? I think you do have a couple.
Yes, I do. I do have, there are two requests.
All right.
Um, Ms. White has asked for approval for one hundred and ninety-five dollars for board professional development to attend the V S B A conference on education that is scheduled for July twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Page has asked for approval for an allocation of seven hundred dollars per site for the following schools. Bushall, Blackwell Preschool, Summer Hill, Broad Rock, Oak Grove, Belneed, Black and Blackwell Elementary for school incentives and end-of-year initiatives.
All right, colleagues, you have heard um the requests from Ms. White for professional development and Ms. Page for student recognition. May I get a motion, please, for that?
Madam Chair, I see Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the board travel and district activity requests as presented.
And do anyone second?
Madam Chair, I believe Ms. Page.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Any discussion? Questions? Ms. Billy, we can proceed with the vote.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Epstein.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, eight, zero.
Thank you very much. As we move forward.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Page requested opportunity to address the group.
Ms. Page, please. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to thank my colleagues for supporting the use of the district activity funds and the students of the eighth district greatly appreciate student and student incentives. So again, thank you for this support.
Thank you so much. And this is a good reminder, colleagues. As you know, we just have another month to um utilize the funds that are in our line items. Otherwise, that's it. And there are a lot of activities coming up at the end and I'm sure our faculty, staff, students and families would appreciate how we move forward for books, professional development, um recognition, in the year school recognition activities. So I just, I'm suggesting, cannot tell you what to do, but I'm suggesting that you do put in paperwork for that. And Ms. Lilly, thank you so very much for proceeding with that. And and I'll get with you later in the week to sign off. Thank you so much. All right, now the next item is number seven, administration business. Receive an update of the P-card pilot expansion and first read of revisions to policy three dash three point four purchasing.
That is me, good.
Oh, Mr. Gonzalez, okay.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Burke, Vice Chair Young, board members and Superintendent Cameras. I bring forth, excuse me, I'm not, I'm a little coffee right now, so excuse me. I bring forth to you an update on the state purchasing card program pilot approved by the school board in November of twenty eighteen. The state P-card program was established to provide a more effective, more efficient, cost-effective method of buying and paying for small dollar transactions. The P-card also provides RPS with a rebate based upon total year spend that goes into the general fund. For fiscal year nineteen twenty, RPS had a total spend of approximately six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and received a rebate of approximately eleven thousand five hundred dollars. The P-card has built-in protections, including merchant category codes, which describes the vendor's specific type of business and blocks ineligible transactions, spending limit controls, audit and report reporting tools, two levels of approval, along with fraud detection and monitoring. In order to take full advantage of the benefits of P-cards and further grow the amount of the rebate, RPS will be expanding the program to all schools throughout the summer. Training will be provided for cardholders and approvers. Excuse me. To codify the use of P-cards, we have brought a brief addition to procurement policy three dash three dot four to include a provision to support our division-level P-card initiative for first read. Thank you.
I just want to note that Ms. Gonzalez has caught what her five-year-old has and has valiantly stuck with us tonight, so I appreciate her very much for doing that.
Thank you and welcome to Virginia, Ms. Gonzalez. Welcome to Virginia. Hope you feel better. So is there any discussion, any questions regarding this update?
Ms. White?
All right, Ms. White, floor is yours.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Ms. Gu- Ms. Gonzalez, if you can answer, um, Mr. Cameras, you can't under your pocket coffin. Why does it, uh, why does the P-card roll out first to the middle schools and then the high schools and then to the elementary schools?
Just the use is greater in middle schools and high schools, uh, but however, we plan to have it rolled out to all schools by the end of the summer. We just need a little bit of time, excuse me, between rollouts and just do a couple of groups of schools every two, about every two weeks to ensure that the proper training is given, that we get the the cards in and uh that everything is all set up. But by the end of the summer, all schools will be um on the P-card program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Young, anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right, that otherwise that concludes our report. Thank you so much. We'll move forward to seven. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. I feel better. Seven point zero two, receive first read of revision revisions to policy seven dash seven point six holidays.
Thank you, Chair Burke. Um, this evening we bring forward forward to you um modifications to the policy for twelve-month employees leave um to align with the recently adopted um calendar for schools. So you'll notice the inclusion of the four religious holidays, Election Day and Juneteenth. And then there is greater clarity um about what to do when a holiday falls on the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the first read, all right. We can move forward.
Madam Chair.
Questions or discussion? Any questions or discussion, Mr. Young?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so i- if this is our first read and then I would presume that our next meeting would be our second read and adoption of this schedule, that would um uh put us prior to Juneteenth. Um, and um, and so my question is, um, you know, i- is it possible to have the end of the school year uh occur on the seventeenth so that we are able to observe Juneteenth this year? It would seem if we do adopt this policy um prior to the end of the school year, then we would be required to do so. Thank you.
Administration wants to respond to that?
Um, if I may, Madam Chair?
Please.
Um, so the the board did take action to observe Juneteenth for this year on uh the Monday following the weekend. Um, we had a concern about giving off uh the last day of school uh given the uh number of instructional hours. Um, our uh neighbors uh who gave off the last day have had much more significant in-person instruction than we have had this year. And so we did not want to exacerbate any concerns uh with the state on that front. I certainly recognize the simplicity of of doing the last day of school, but that's why we brought to the board previously uh to do the following Monday.
I would. Thank you so very much. Is that done? And also, colleagues, I didn't receive any feedback regarding our school board meeting scheduled for the last Monday in um June due to the, what we voted on earlier, which was the Monday, the nineteenth to have off of the twentieth, whatever that date is. Okay. All right, because the reason I'm saying that is is because of of not being in session and our policy states that we don't meet when it's a holiday. And then we have the twenty-second, we have the um Virginia Board, Virginia School Board Association workshop. So we're going to meet the last Monday in June. Then we don't meet again until July and just one meeting in July. I didn't get any feedback over the, on that, but I did send it out to everyone. Okay, let's move forward.
I would, I would like to just respond if I could.
Sure, please, of course.
Uh, so I, you know, I I think that um I I, you know, given the fact that um, you know, I I would, I would request that the board, the administration um make the ask to to make the adjustment. We haven't had any snow days this year. Um, and you know, the, apparently the dropout rate has 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 gone down. We've seen, I I would assume, you know, a reasonable uh attendance. I I think um, you know, it it kind of goes both ways, given that we're virtual. Um, so if I I I personally don't see a good argument not to do it. Um, and and I think it would at least uh deserve the question to be asked. Um, you know, having the last day of school on uh occur on a holiday when others will be out of school while the school district is virtual, um, it just doesn't seem like the the best use of time. I can assure you, um, you know, m- many teachers won't be uh engaged in in hardcore learning after the SOLs and such. Um, and as a parent, I I will be somewhat frustrated watching my kid stare at a screen um when uh, you know, they could have been doing something, something else to observe the holiday. Thank you.
I can certainly uh make that ask of the state. I do want to clarify, we had several snow days this year, which have um actually further impacted our instructional hours, so um it it is a significant concern, but I can certainly uh inquire with the state.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Young? Comments?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Seven point zero three, receive update on twenty twenty-one graduation ceremonies. Woo! We're ready for that. We're ready for that. All right, Mr. Hughes, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair Burke, Vice Chair Young, school board members and Superintendent Cameras. We are very delighted to announce our high school graduation dates to take place on June twenty-first, twenty-second and twenty-third at the Diamond. I want to give the Squirrels organization, specifically Parney and Hannah, uh, a big shout out for their partnership. We really appreciate you all. And we will be sending out additional information to parents and our students in the upcoming weeks.
Okay, and this is on the website as well, I take it?
It's not yet on the website, but I did share it in RPS Direct today and our high schools will uh be sharing the information as well.
We've been waiting to hear this. So we're going to have graduations after school closes.
That is correct.
Oh.
The Squirrels were very gracious in that we have to, we needed to coordinate our graduation dates around the baseball schedule. The Squirrels' season has successfully started. And we just had to, again, coordinate when the Squirrels would be playing road games.
All right, are there any questions regarding this, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed, then Ms. White.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Referring to the schedule that was just presented to us, Madam Chair, maybe off a day, but is our next school board governance on June the 22nd at 5:00 PM?
Yes, it is.
So that would mean with the open high school graduation, none of us will be able to be present? And that would be, surely that would be a shame.
And John Marshall as well.
And in no way am I saying that Mr. Hughes's office did that intentionally. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just bringing, yes, ma'am, I'm just bringing it to the cabinets bringing it to their attention and our attention that both of those graduations may have a lack, particularly the four o'clock, lack of school board attendance. Because we already have school board governance scheduled on June 22nd, unless we request as a board, you and, right, I see your head going this way. I see it, but, yes, ma'am, I understand duly noted, but yes, ma'am. Just wanted to bring that to the attention that I know school board governance, we would have to, at this timeframe, I believe, and it is in our documents, we would have to pay to reschedule and or cancel.
Technically, we need to get our governance piece straight for the State Department, which is required as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cameras, Mr. Hughes, can you all go back? You know, I don't want to miss one graduation.
Dr. Harris Mohammed. First of all, Dr. Harris Mohammed, I appreciate you flagging that. And we, these dates are our dates, so we can move open high school to June 21st at four o'clock. Because if you go back and look at the schedule, there are only two, there are only two graduation dates on the first day. As long as we have two graduations, two graduation dates that have three graduations, it really doesn't matter. So we can move open high school to June 21st at four o'clock PM.
John Marshall, if our governance starts at five, and this one lasts two hours. Now, miss, we do that at the, at the plate, at the diamond? We may have to do that, which will be. Ms. Jones is shaking her head.
I will, I will talk with the Squirrels organization tomorrow. Perhaps we could start John Marshall's graduation a tad bit later. Maybe 7:30?
What time is it get dark?
Well, we'll have.
7:30 and 8:05.
I have access to the lights at the stadium now, so.
Yeah, I understand that. We trust that you will get back to us before the week is up. With the thing, just thank you. And thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed, for bringing that to our attention. And I see.
I'm sorry, I do have one final comment. I just wanted to say I do appreciate not having the graduations where we only have a 30-minute to 45-minute break in between. So I did appreciate that.
Okay, all right. So we look forward to getting an update from Mr. Hughes on that regarding that, our professional development for the board. So thank you so much. And again, thank you for planning an activity at the Diamond. I know things have changed for the governor across the country, but I'm glad that this is very timely and our students are so excited. So thank you very much for planning that. All right, we can move forward to seven point zero four, receiving.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I believe Ms. White also had a question if I'm not mistaken.
I'm sorry, Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hughes, I do have a question. Is there any safety protocols in place or will we'll still be doing it like the, like they're doing at the Diamond for the baseball games?
No, we'll follow all safety protocols that are specified by Governor Northam at that time. So, and we will also follow the safety protocols that we have currently in place.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right, then we'll move forward to seven point zero four, receiving update on fall 2021 reopening.
I'm going to ask Ms. Gonzalez just to walk us through the dashboard, and then I'm going to have Dr. Harris speak to our communication efforts.
Good evening again. Excuse me. The school safety, the school reopening safety dashboard was launched to provide transparency, accountability, and real-time visibility for tracking implementation of division-wide health and safety measures as we work to safely welcome students back, students, families, and staff back for in-person instruction. Health and safety measures tracked by the safety dashboard are based upon current guidelines and information available from the CDC and BDH. The safety dashboard document contains two data tabs for viewing progress. A division-level summary tab and a school-level tab to filter progress by individual schools. The safety dashboard is periodically updated and published on the RPS website and is comprised of the following general categories of activities. Facilities upgrades to improve safety, supplies and materials to improve safety, personnel to improve safety, and school protocols to improve safety and school bus air quality improvements. Under each general category of activity, subcategories are listed, which give a more detailed view of progress. For example, facilities upgrades, bathroom upgrades, which show 95% of schools have begun or completed bathroom repairs and upgrades. Other facility upgrades, which shows 98% of schools have plexiglass shields installed and 62% have HVAC preventative maintenance or improvement work underway. Supplies and materials shows hand sanitizer installed in every classroom and common area. In eight, in 98% of our schools are complete, fully stocked custodial supplies and nursing suites, which shows 100% of schools are in progress. Custodians also conducted a window audit at all schools. The audit found seven schools are designed for windows not to open and 42 schools are designed for windows to open. Of the 42 schools, 27 have windows that do open overall. There may be some schools in that group that do have some rooms that may need may need repair, but they do not need extensive repairs throughout the school. 15 of the schools do have windows that need extensive work. Next steps are that facilities will conduct repairs where possible and will utilize contracted assistance if needed. Our goal is to ensure that at least one window per classroom is able to be opened, assuming windows are designed to be opened at the school. We have also added a couple of photos that show the important work that's underway. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. You all have been busy, but I know we still have so much to do. Are there any questions regarding the fall 2021 reopening, Mr. Young? Questions or comments?
Not as of yet, Madam Chair.
We'll give it a few minutes.
Madam Chair, Ms. Dorr?
All right, Ms. Dorr?
Thank you. I wanted to confirm, are we still using temperature scanners at schools?
No, we're not going to be using them in the fall, given the latest guidance.
Have we purchased those temperature scanners?
We did, and we're looking at reselling them or using them potentially in nursing suites as appropriate.
Good idea with the nursing suites. The, if I may, the RPS live with Mrs. Gresham and the team that presented this past Wednesday, they were excellent. They were very, very, very good and just, I think it was the crew chief from Community and River City. And they were, along with Ms. Gresham and someone else, of course, a student from Franklin Military Academy, but it was, it was very informative about all they have, the crews have addressed. And they're serious about getting it done, very serious and smiling about it. So I really liked that energy and we thank that team so much. All right, if we can move along, any other questions, Mr. Young, regarding seven point zero four?
If I may, Dr. Harris has a presentation as well as part of this agenda item.
Oh, please, yes. Okay, thank you. I apologize, Dr. Harris.
And Madam, and Madam Chair, there are a couple of questions, so it's your pleasure as it relates to if we entertain those now or subsequent.
All right, maybe we should go ahead and entertain those questions. Dr. Shady Harris, is that okay with you?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. Ms. Young, who's listed?
Ma'am, Dr. Harris Mohammed, and then Ms. White.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. I just have two questions, and I appreciate you all allowing us to go now. Will Henry Marsh, would the green space be completed before September the 8th? And I might have missed this, and if I did, I apologize. Was the bipolar ionization installed in all three new schools?
I can take on Henry Marsh, no, the green space will not be complete. Given the Committee on Architectural Reviews requirements about the use of some of the existing bricks to create an archway, it will make the demolition process a much slower process. So the building, the old Mason building will be down by the time school returns, but all of the work to put in the tennis courts and such will not be done by the time that school starts. On the second question, the ionization work has proceeded, I believe, on all three schools. We are pressing pause on that, though, given the research that we shared with the board earlier.
And you did share that, I was going to say you did share that information that came to you at our last board meeting or the meeting before, okay?
I believe it was two meetings ago, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
I believe that you're correct, and thank you for saying that. Just in case someone in the public missed it, they can go to the notes. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you so much. And Ms. White, you had a question or comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, maybe I didn't hear this. Will there be any type of handbook online where families and they can just actually look in it and, you know, everyone receive the same information? I know we had a lot of engagement, thanks to Dr. Harris, all the engagement we had with the families, but I'm sure there are still some open questions that needs to be answered and maybe a handbook where you could just go in and kind of find out what's going on?
Yes. In fact, one of the wonderful things about all of the community conversations is that we were able to collect all of those questions. They're all being collated into a master frequently asked question document that we are preparing, one for families and one for staff. Dr. Harris's team is also working on some videos to show ultimately what the environment will be like so that folks cannot just read about it, but see it as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. If there are any other questions or comments, we'll now move forward. Dr. Shady Harris is.
I'm sorry.
There is, there is someone?
Yes, ma'am. One more from Ms. Rizzi.
All right, Ms. Rizzi, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Cameras, just to like, just go over it, just to summarize, we, RPS is suspending the use of the bipolar ionization technology and now moving toward doing individual HEPA filtration units in, is it every classroom?
That's correct. Not just classrooms, but any space that staff or students will be using.
Okay. And then will any of the protocols change as a result of the recent CDC guidelines? Anything that you can point out that's major at this point?
Not as of yet. We want to see how things further develop. I know the governor is planning to make some additional announcements over the next couple of weeks. So for now, we're going to keep moving forward with everything as we have planned. We'll see what the governor announces. We'll see what the Virginia Department of Education says, what the Virginia Department of Health says, and I anticipate we'll likely do some updates before summer school, and then we'll likely do additional updates right before school starts as well as this all evolves. We do recognize that throughout this year, we have taken rightly so a more conservative approach, given the impact that COVID has had on our community. I anticipate we will continue to do so, meaning we won't be the first ones to take masks off. We might be one of the last ones to do so, and that's really out of an abundance of caution for our children, families, and our staff.
Okay, Ms. Rizzi, any other questions? All right, if not, Dr. Shady Harris, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Burke, School Board members, Superintendent Cameras. It is my pleasure to provide you with a fall reopening update as we continue to engage with love as we prepare for reopening. Many of you, I just want to thank all the board members who've been able to participate in our regional community conversations. As you know, we've been holding these for both families and staff. And it's been amazing that to date, we've had over 1,000 staff participate in those conversations, as well as hundreds of families who engage with us virtually are one of our, at one of our in-person sessions. Pictured here is Metropolitan African American Baptist Church, and we're pleased to partner with several churches to do these live watch sessions. We've also made it a point to make sure that we have physicians at every call that are representative of our staff and families in the rich diversity of our community. Our family liaisons are on the ground every single day. Nothing beats knocking on a door, in-person communication. And they are doing this each and every day. They are doing this through community walks, which you'll see on the next slide. As we walk through the community, specifically over the course of the past four weeks, we've knocked on over 800 doors, sharing information about fall reopening. Additionally, we are having mobile community conversations. This allows us to be really specific about setting up at churches, businesses, parks, nonprofits. You'll see many of them pictured here for us to not only pour into our community businesses, especially our minority businesses, but for us to be visible so that we can hear from our community. Additionally, we've partnered with the Office of Community Wealth Building. They have an ambassador program, but what we did is we trained all of our ambassadors on all of our reopening updates. So they are specifically in the RRHA communities, and they are there with reopening information, connecting with our families, specifically over 300 families weekly to share reopening updates. And then we know getting ready for reopening is not just about when school starts, it's also making sure we're supporting some of the areas that our families really need help in, whether it's food insecurity, housing insecurity, and right here, pictured here is the artist's family. Through our partnership with housing families first, we were able to place them in permanent housing. And over the course of this pandemic, we've placed 30 families in permanent housing. That is going to make sure we reopen with love, and we're continuing that work with housing families first. We also have our Welcome Center where we're supporting newcomer families and really focused on language justice for those non-English speaking families to make sure as we reopen, we are taking into the needs of all of our families. So what's next? We want more visibility, more connections, more partnerships. So what I have provided for you is our upcoming community walk schedules you'll see. Our community corners. This is based on feedback that we receive from the community to say, hey, we want to know you're going to be here every Monday or every Tuesday. So you'll see on the north side, we're at the Calhoun Center. Every, I think it's, I can't, if you scroll down a little, Superintendent Cameras, every. Every, I think it's, I can't, if you scroll down a little Superintendent Camaras, every Monday and Wednesday, we're there. Families can count us, count on us to be in those spaces. Also over fifty new community conversations. And then again, with our focus on language justice, we want to make sure we have these in Spanish as well for our families. And then what better way to connect to the families and go where they are than in our new RPS Engage buses where we are gonna be visible all summer? Really making sure we're going to families, providing resources as we reopen with love two point O. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harris. Mr. Young, let's have some feedback.
Yes, ma'am. We are awaiting folks, but I'm sure there will be someone to weigh in momentarily.
Absolutely, because that's, our schedule has been planned for us as well, where we need to be. And at least we have several days. I want to be on the bus, though.
Madam Chair, Ms. Paige.
Ms. Paige?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Dr. Harris, I just want to say thank you for all the work that your team, that they are doing. I can actually say that I witnessed the foots on the ground, knocking on doors, engaging our students and families. And thank you for everything that you are doing and we gotta keep it up. Keep pushing it, keep pushing it. So we keep engaging our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Young, anyone else?
No, ma'am.
May I make one comment, Madam Chair?
Please, yes.
I, I just wanted to thank Board Member Paige for joining one of the community walks. I believe it was this weekend, is that correct?
Yes.
And I know Dr. Harris would love for any and all board members to join on any of the walks at your convenience. I know folks are very, very busy, but please don't hesitate to reach out. We'd love to schedule that for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And this apparently according to the data we've seen thus far, we got regarding the graduation rate. The other information which Dr. F presented earlier is about the relationships, the partnerships. So it's great to know that our families know that Richard Public Schools, we're here to work with them. Thank you so much. And that's, that's greatly needed during this pandemic and all the other pandemics that we have to address. And just trying to make sure each child gets what he or she should. So thank you, Dr. Harris. Well done. Thank you. I still want to ride the bus. I don't know about walking yet. Okay, as we move forward, eight point zero one, Board Governance Manual. Colleagues, during our last meeting, we discussed this and it's on the agenda, agenda tonight. But I know you haven't had a chance to meet and there's some, a housekeeping error that we need to take care of. I know that we had Ms. Paige, Ms. Jones, Dr. Harris Mohammed and Ms. White to volunteer. And I think Ms. Jones stated she would take the lead on that committee. However, because it isn't ad hoc committee, we need to vote on it and we didn't vote on it. And of course, if more than two of us meet, it has to be announced as a public meeting. And Ms. Lilly is gonna work with that committee, which is expected. I have an email that I was sending to you all and I just had my chance to push the button, so. But we do tonight, we do need to have this in place and our deadline date is still the twenty second. I hope you all saw the email from Samantha. Did you all get that Samantha with the draft? As well as the samples that VDOE sent us, Virginia Department of Education sent us. So when we meet with the Virginia School Board Association on the twenty second, we should have a draft in place. And hopefully we'll have a clerk in place by then, I hope. If not, we'll just have to work from within, but we do have some upcoming, as I stated earlier, interim. So tonight, if, if I can, if there are any questions regarding the, why we need to have a motion, fine. If not, if we can receive a motion from the one of you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Door.
All right, Ms. Door, would you be so kind?
A motion to approve the Board Governance Ad Hoc Committee to include Ms. Paige, Ms. Jones, Dr. Harris Mohammed and Ms. White.
Is there a second?
Yes, ma'am. I put it in the chat, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Door and sent it by Dr. Harris Mohammed for this ad hoc committee to move forward as listed. Thank you so very much. Let's move down to eight point zero two, discuss.
Sorry, we need a roll call vote.
Of course we do. Thank you. All right, would you be so kind, Ms. Lilly?
Was there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Paige?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously and I would add, reiterate, Ms., what Ms. Burke has said about making sure you send, send, once you schedule your meetings, please make sure you send those to me so that they can get noticed appropriately, publicly. And we have to do Zoom and all, however you intend to meet, we just need to figure out those logistics and make sure they're noticed appropriately.
You know, we didn't place in the motion, but Ms. Jones did state earlier that she didn't mind being the lead person. So at least to get us started with that. So Ms. Jones, would you continue with that? Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, we have Mr. Young. Is there anything else in the, I'm seeing something else on the chat?
Madam Chair, I believe relevant to eight point oh two, I see, Ms. Gibson. To speak.
All right, I hadn't introduced to yet, but I can. And then we have a discussion on it. Eight point zero two, discuss school board committee policy and structure, Mrs. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we amend the, this motion, or this agenda item to be a discussion specific to the creation of the Evaluation Committee.
All right, we have the Evaluation Committee. Is that which, which consists of Ms. Paige, Dr. Harris Mohammed and myself? That should be on the list. It's, so I'm not clear on what you're asking.
Right, because we're working on the dates now.
Right.
Okay, I, I thought that the evaluate, well, I guess what I would like to do is discuss, because the evaluation is due in June.
That's correct.
So the agenda that's on the table right now is the kind of an overall discussion on committees. And given the timing that the evaluation is due in June, I think it's important to have a discussion about the Evaluation Committee specifically.
Okay, we, Ms. Paige has been kind enough to, to converse with Dr. Harris Mohammed. And we are aware that that is due. And in fact, we also attended a workshop provided by Virginia School Board Association. And we know to whom we must evaluate and those persons know as well. So, so far as a discussion, we'll, we'll get back with you all. It's not due June first. But we have time to do it before the end of the month of June, let's do. So in fact, we meet again on the twenty eighth of, of June as well. Excuse me, twenty eighth, right. So there is time for us to get that information out as we have in the past. And the new persons we also would need to work with in terms of filling out the paperwork. But I've talked to Milton Parker, the auditor, his assistant as well, talked to Mr. Camaras. And those are the only three persons that we have to evaluate at this time. Is that correct, Ms. Paige?
Yes, and also I would like to add that we are working on dates. So we can provide to Ms. Lilly so that she can properly notice the meetings for the Evaluation Committee. So that all board members will be a part of the process.
So we, we, we are in the process of moving through. We are gonna be on time with that.
Yes.
And we, yes. Does that answer your question, Ms. Gibson?
No, I do, I mean, I think that right now we're basically in an agenda item, which is what I want to discuss, which was to discuss the Evaluation Committee. So.
Well, at this time, the Evaluation Committee does not have a report to give because we're still working on that part, but we will give that one in timely manner appropriately.
Yes. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, I see Dr. Harris Mohammed, then Ms. White, then Ms. Paige.
All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. I just, it's not a question, I'm sorry. It's more of a comment. I just wanted to let the public know and my school board colleagues that attending the NSBA conference, I did have a session on the superintendent evaluation. So maybe not through VSBA, but it was through NSBA. So I thought that was important to share.
Yeah, thank you so much. We're gonna, we're gonna do it right. And Mr. Superintendent Camaras is aware as well. And the next person was what, Ms. White?
Yes, I had a question too, and I did attend the VSBA superintendent. And my question is, I heard that you said we're rating the superintendent, but where is the performance indicators? Because they should be in the.
Exactly, exactly. You are exactly correct. We were in the workshop.
And that was, and that was one of the things that was in the workshop. And also concerning the media aid or how we actually did it, but I can write that up and talk about that later, but.
All right, please be mindful that that is all written up for us as well across the board for all board persons to know of. So the performance indicators, the whole nine yards. So the form has not changed over the years. In fact, it's the same form that's been used similar for principles. You, you're aware of that, the same form. So this is we used last year.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Yeah, we need to make sure that our new persons are, have seen that as well. But it's, it's, um, performance indicators, the whole nine yards. And moving forward, and Mr. Camaras and I discussed that, and I also discussed this with Mr. Milton Parker. We need to do a mid-year as well, beginning, mid-year and the end of the year. Mid-year, not to evaluate, but mid-year just to follow up and make sure that we're on target with goals and objectives that are in place. But I need to probably, Ms. Lilly, if you would help me with this tomorrow, go ahead and reference the pages that they can just pull up on their own to read through their information. As, we'll, we'll talk before the week is up, because it's already in writing. And then we also had that Ms. White as a part of our workshop, which would be the same thing Dr. Mohammed had as well, so.
Very good.
Yeah. No, Madam Chair, I was just indicating that in the VSBA, they were saying that the performance indicators should be in the contract now before we do that. So I was asking you, why aren't they in the contract now?
All right, Ms. Lilly, would you please address that? Because we're talking now.
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna just simply say, the question has gone, the agenda topic is for committees.
And we're, we're kind of veering off into an item that could potentially be a personnel item. Ms. White, we can talk, we can talk offline about the contract and what is in the, you know, the contract is public. So therefore, I, I don't know that this is the appropriate time to discuss the contents of the employment contract.
I didn't want the contents. I just wanted that statement, why, I understand that, Ms. White.
You're asking about the content of the employment contract. So I think this is not the appropriate time for that.
Thank you. Ms. Paige?
I'm, I'm good, Madam Chair. I just want to say that, um, we, we will be meeting soon. So board members would have, like I said, they will have ample opportunities to participate in the evaluation process of our employee.
And thank you so much for taking the lead on that. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Was it, yeah. With our committees, we've been putting this off for a while. And I found we have some more to add. So does, Mr. Young, anyone else before we move forward on that?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Rizzi.
Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the things that we discussed quite a bit earlier in the year regarding the evaluation was having it be public. And so, so I would like to have a discussion and, and likely a vote just to, to signal the board's position on, and tend for the, for the evaluation to be public. And, you know, I would be open to doing that today or at our, our next meeting. But I think, given the amount of dialogue that there was on that, that that would be important for us to do.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I would request that, that item be discussed at the next meeting. If, if at all, we need to look at the contract and there are other issues that, again, this is not the topic that, this is not the topic that we're supposed to be on right now.
I'm sorry.
Right, so I would, I would request that, that it's heard, it's noted. We can talk about that at a different time.
So this evening's topic is to discuss, see the committees that we have. There's some housekeeping areas that we do to address, as well as there was a suggestion of additional committees to add. And we've not discussed that. Ms. Rizzi, you have a comment before we move on?
I do. It's, it's related to Ms. White's comment. So, you know, Attorney Lilly can, you know, circumspect me if I need to be, you know, corrective. But, you know, I know that the VSBA meeting, we talked about revising and tightening goals and objectives for the mid-year evaluations. And since we're on a time crunch, I, I, I do want to say that, you know, I'd like to have more information about how that will work.
I ask that we give the committee the opportunity to meet and bring a report back. And if you have any other suggestions, would you please send them to Mrs. Paige? And I'm sure she will forward to the committee. But right now, tonight, I need to go back to what is listed, the purpose of tonight. But I ask that we respect the, the Evaluation Committee, just as we would the Score Committee, just as we would the Student Performance Committee, just as we would the Foundations Committee. At this time, at this point, we have more than, we have what, nineteen different committees, Mr. Young? And three more to consider. So at this time respectfully, as a listed and expected, please give that Evaluation Committee the time and the space to be able to bring back a report as the other committees. We'll make sure everybody receives what they're supposed to receive in advance. No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you for, again, Mrs. Paige, and thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Mr., all right, Mr., you're welcome. Mr. Young, can we move forward with the committees that's listed? Would you be so kind? You have that report in front of you?
Madam Chair, I would need to pull that actually, but I can.
Well, one thing I would like to discuss as we move forward, and I, for instance, I did find out we have, we need to add the score. And I think Ms. Paige and Mrs. Jones, is that correct? You've been added to that committee revising the, the, not revising, I should say, but you're on that committee, which usually there are revisions. And I don't know what the timeframe is. So if you will, please be so kind. I know I need to add my report from the listed committees as well. So colleagues, if you would be so kind, please go ahead, Mr. Young. You have it?
Well, let me inquire of you what you would like to discuss next. I did pull the roster of proposed committees. I believe the, the current committees, the roster, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the roster, rosters, plural, are full. Unless someone corrects me to the contrary, but instead, we probably need to revisit that discussion relevant to those four new committees. If that's, if that's your pleasure, Madam Chair, or, and I can also pull the full list too.
Would you pull the full list first, please? Because we, we need to make sure we have certain committees that are required. And we need to get our. And we need to get our data in for that and document that. And I think, Mr. Young, you're the only one that has submitted something, and that was from the vacant properties committee. But as we move on to add committees, my dear colleagues, we do need to cover that steps with what has already been taking place. We know this has been an interesting year. The law schedule, but we do need to, and we're attending meetings. I know we all have at least four or five a week. I know I do. And the list continues to grow, but before this school year ends, we need to have documentation of what we have attended and what the feedback was. We've had some great presentations and workshops and committees. Hi, and we're also putting things off for a while. And we didn't meet with, for instance, I know the finance committee is finally in place, correct? You all are getting ready to meet? Mr. Young, go, don't, would you be so kind to go down that list for me, please?
Yes, ma'am, it's, uh, it, so at, at the very top, the committee, we just discussed the evaluation committee comprised of three members. The finance committee, again, three members. The le- the legislative committee, again, three members. Uh, the aforementioned vacant property committee.
Mm-hmm.
Discipline.
Which, that's everybody. Has everybody had a chance to participate on that? I'll come back to that. Cause everybody, every board member is held responsible to serve at some point. And Ms. Page has taken the lead on that, and thank you so much.
The school. Yes, ma'am, so the school health advisory board, and that is comprised of, if I'm not mistaken, two school board members along with citizen members.
And I think that, um, forgive me, Jonathan, as we're moving forward, I, I believe that Mr. Desco and Ms. Jones have been working on that. And who's the third person?
Ms. Dua.
Ms. Dua, right, I know they've been meeting, but I don't, I don't think we have anything in writing yet. There's no more than two lines. Thank you.
App, Appomattox Regional Governor's School.
And that's yours, really, you, okay.
Yes, ma'am, Maggie Walker Governor's School.
Yeah, and I know Mrs. Um, White has attended several meeting, board meetings, so we can get just a brief write-up.
Not one Thursday.
You did want, you have one Thursday, cool, so we know we're gonna get a report by Monday.
Code, code RVA.
Code RVA, that's Ms. Gibson.
Next up? The next up.
It's myself and Ms. Rizzi.
Yeah, I thought it was Jones, and I'm the alternate, yeah.
However, however it unfolds, you're both of one or the other, right? So is that correct? Jones and Rizzi is the sub. Good idea.
The.
All right.
The City Council Education and Human Services Committee.
Mr. Camus and I have been meeting almost every week. So they have everything from housing to homelessness, to school construction, to um, gun violence was the last one, which was very, 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 very good. And I'm so proud of Ron Bagat and his team for all that they continue to do in the community. I mean, they are, which, he's been doing this for over many, many years before he even got into his position, but, um, they, they're serious, they're serious. Thank you.
The Education Foundation Committee.
I have a meeting tomorrow at eight. And a meeting at the next, every other week or so with the fa- finance piece and the, um, board. Where Mr. Camus and I both attend that. And Mr. Young, you know, you always can join us as well as you so desire.
The Community of Caring Board.
Yes, that's Mrs. Um, Dr. Harris Mohammed and myself, and I'll talk with you about that, Dr. Harris Mohammed, because they're in support of, um, all of the eastern schools plus Overby Shepherd. And there's another school, Overby Shepherd is on that list as well, so.
MLK preschool, correct? That, that's a, that's a, that's the east.
No, that's a different one, that's a different, no, no, you're right, yes, MLK and, the MLK itself and the preschool, the middle school and the, right, thank you. And in fact, we're getting ready for an event on, on June the third, so that'll be a good opportunity. I think we're gonna be face to face. Don't quote me, so I can make sure that you're on that list.
Okay, you said you would get with me, get the information to me.
Yeah, we meet monthly, and, okay, I'll get with you.
Yeah, I sent you a message as a reminder.
Please do, so I can send it to, um, Bruce Tyler.
Well, I have been to the meeting, um, I've been to one meeting, and I think we have another one coming up. He sent a report, a financial rapport.
Excellent, then you're already on it. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. Who else, Mr. Young?
Council of Great City Schools.
That's Ms. Page and myself, and there's a meeting every, um, every Friday at twelve noon. I've only attended one. It's more of a powwow session with board chairs. I know superintendent has one every week or whatever so as well. But just the idea of making the time, but it's very, looking at the site, it's very interesting, keeping up to date. Everybody's struggling in getting teachers and counselors and, and specialists, everybody is, so. COVID.
Mayor Administration and Leadership.
That's Mr. Young and myself. And we met this past week.
Education Compact.
That's all of us.
And then, last but not least, the head start.
Before you move forward, Mr. Young, with the educational compact, the minutes can serve as documentation for that, because everyone's listed that attends, so we don't have to worry about writing up our own write-up. This is you do with VPC, you, you have your minutes. Thank you.
And then last but not least is the Head Start Policy Council.
And I need to, um, it's, it's a lot that we have updated with that. Um, and I need to make sure that you all get that in your, your minutes as well. And we've been, um, restructuring per se. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. I thought we had nineteen, seventeen committees, and we need to add the score, which is Ms. Page and Mrs. Jones. And now, what are the, are there any questions regarding the old committees? And what my, my concern is, as well as we move on with the, to decide whether what new committees we want to, um, embrace, we need to be mindful that we also need to cover these committees that are already in place, and maybe we can combine a couple of them, because there's only nine of us. And already about, it will be, it will be over twenty-some odd committees, so if there are some that we can put together, that would be perfect. All right, Mr. Young, can you give us information? I appreciate your work with that. In terms of, um.
The new, the proposed committees?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. They are as follows: Human Resources Committee, a Policy Committee, a Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Committee, and an Audit Committee.
Now, question, what's the difference in the audit finance? Because I'm thinking the finance, can you read the description there for the Audit Committee?
Yes, ma'am, a- and perhaps I should, uh, well, yes, ma'am, let me begin per your request with the audit, and then if you'd like, I can read the other three.
That would be perfect. Then we'll see what questions the board members have.
The summer, the summary description for the proposed committees, first for Audit Committee, contribute, uh, contribute to development of scope of work and audit plan for Office of Audit and review findings to provide data to board. That's Audit Committee.
Review findings of what?
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, so contribute to development of scope of work and audit plan for Office of Audit and review findings to provide data to board. The Human Resources Committee, monitor significant personnel developments and provide school board, the school board with updates prior to board meetings along with ensuring completion of any audits. Policy Committee, review existing policies and evaluate usefulness and/or need for amendments pertinent to existing and proposed policy. And last but not least, Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Committee, evaluate programs and processes along with propose for consideration initiatives aimed at inclusiveness within the school district. And Madam Chair, I believe, uh, I saw FIFOK's request opportunity to comment, if I may, let me.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
I see Ms. Page, Ms. Dua, and Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Ms. Page?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So my comment is, um, Ms. Collins has sent out to all board members a calendar throughout remaining, um, part of the year for to sign up to serve on interdisciplinary committee. Um, that's something that we must do. So I would encourage, if you have not signed up, please do so. Because it's enough of us to spread out the, the work that is required and that is needed to make sure that our students receive the support that they need to be successful. So again, I will encourage everyone, if you haven't signed up for the disciplinary committee, please do so. Cause she, um, was kind enough to put out the calendar for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Page. We probably need to be reminded on that as well.
Right. And just to, um, add to the Audit Committee, and I know Ms. Dua can speak to that as a Finance Committee Chair, but Mr. Parker, he has made a, a recommendation to the board, um, regarding the Audit Committee. So we have tasked him to do the work of audit, and I want to encourage us to support his recommendation. Cause he is a sub- subject matter expert. Thank you.
And, um, as we move forward with questioning, we didn't add the governance, the one that we just, the committee we just voted on, which governance and so policy and finance could be one, the same committee. Is that what you were saying, Ms. Page, as well?
Audit and finance.
Yes. And governance and policy could be the same, because you're gonna be reviewing policy as a governance team anyway. So that's, I'm just putting it out there for right now, we can decide. Human resources, I don't know whether legally, what they, what's, what's the description there again, to monitor?
If, if I may, Madam Chair, if, if we remember, um, a couple of months ago, when the, we first started talking about committees, I then came back and said that the HR committee and the policy committee could be one under the policy committee, because you're talking about policies and procedures. But that was before we discussed the governance committee. So, and I will still, you know, make that recommendation, um, that the HR, that proposal would be attached to your governance, because you're talking about policies and procedures, you're talking about the governance of the school division. Um, so I would remove respectfully acts to remove the HR, which I thought we had, but I apologize, um, off of the list and keep the Policy Committee to work with the Governance Committee.
We did, we did discuss that, and we need to be mindful of that, that's in line with the HR piece.
Right.
Need to be mindful. Ms. Lilly, do you want to speak to that?
I would just echo, um, and follow the recommend, suggest following the recommendation that Dr. Harris Mohammed just made. I think that, um, she's right on target with the, that the HR can fall under, because it's policy. And you just do not have the HR committee specifically, because that could go over the line. And if, if you want to add committees, you add your board governance and policy committees, and I think they will be most effective.
I, I do too.
Okay. So we have right now, but this will have to be a motion, we're, we're discussing Policy Committee, which would entail all policy would be under the governance piece. I mean, would be together. Governance team that we just voted on would address, be the, would also be responsible for the policy piece. Is that permissible, Ms. Lilly? Or is that two different things?
Well, you all need to decide what, what, and, and I have, I'm looking to the left over here, because I have your policy on standing committee, on board committees, um, on this device over here. So you have your standing committees, and you have your ad hoc committees. And you all need to decide as you're going down this list of new committees, what you want to be a standing committee or what you want to be an ad hoc committee. The board governance ad hoc committee that was just added is simply that, just to do the board governance. I assume the manual that was, you know, uh, the, the charge that was given to you by the BDOE. The board needs to decide whether you want to turn that into a standing committee, and it'd be the board governance and policy committee, and then you need to, um, adjust your policy on the books to reflect that. So, you know, I, I just, you know, we can, you can make it an ad hoc, but again, you need to vote on it, and, and the ad hoc, um, description here in the, in the policy says, "The appointment and objectives of any such ad hoc committee shall be detailed in the, in the meeting minutes." So it needs to be specific, whatever you're going to charge it, you know, whatever umbrella it's gonna fall under, it needs to be specific what the charge is. And what the, what the title is.
So we just voted to have the governance as an ad hoc committee, so that would not fit then. If, if, if the policy, which it probably would be if we keep that, would be, um, a standing committee. I don't, I don't know, that's what I'm thinking. So we talked about the audit and the finance being one committee, so, which means it's an ongoing committee. And we haven't addressed the diversity committee. What's, what's listed under there? Under that?
Uh, evaluate programs and processes along with propose for consideration initiatives aimed at inclusiveness within the school district. And Madam Chair, I do want to, uh, acknowledge that two of our colleagues, Ms. Dua and Ms. White, have also requested opportunity to weigh in.
Okay. All right, we'll go on, Ms. Dua.
Uh, thank you. I think Ms. Page captured, um, my thoughts on the Audit and Finance Committee. Mr. Parker's recommendation was to, um, change the name of the Finance Committee to be a Finance and Audit Committee, um, which is consistent with, um, um, many school districts. Um, there is an open question on an external audit committee comprised of community members, which this board did, uh, vote to approve. Um, my recommendation was that, is that, um, we have our first finance committee meeting, I believe, tomorrow or next week. Um, we can discuss, um, next steps on the external audit committee. Um, but my, I agree with Ms. Page, and, um, I think that's consistent with what Mr. Parker also recommended.
So when we vote, the suggestion thus far, which will probably have you all turn that into a motion, is the finance and audit committee will be combined as one, as a standing committee. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
All right. And Ms. White, you have a question? Comment?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, my question was on the Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity, uh, committee. Could that be a committee that is also external standing committee? That also, uh, is with the community? I'm not sure. Can teachers be involved also?
Ms. Lilly, this, this will be under a different umbrella, because this is for the, that would be different for what we have listed here, but there could be a committee that's established otherwise. As, but right now, correct me, Ms. Lilly, some guidance, please.
Um, I, um, need to be, I guess more, I guess more, I need to understand the purpose of that committee a little bit more, and what the charge of that committee would be, and what the board would expect as outcomes, et cetera. Um, before, you know, I weighed in on all that. Um, I just don't know whether that would be a standing committee or an ad hoc committee, or what the purpose of that would be. I also, if I, if I may, you mentioned a vote tonight. What I would suggest doing is get the board's consensus tonight, because in order to add standing committees, you, we're gonna need to bring your policy back. So I think you need to adjust your policy and bring that back as a vote, um, in, in normal course of business. And we can do that, you know, the next meeting, but get your consensus together, and we can, um, I would suggest bringing back a formal plan, so it's written, and people can react to it.
Ms. White, does that answer your question? I don't think so, does it?
It did not answer my question.
Yeah, but you were.
Yeah, no, but.
To get a.
I don't know what she.
Tell that she wants to get a committee together that would include, uh, people in the community, teachers, parents, you want.
Yes.
So that, that, would that fall under the board, or would that fall under Mr. Camus? That would fall under one of your departments then, wouldn't it?
Mr. Camus, do you have one already, uh, developed?
S- specifically on equity? Um, no, but I am happy to work with you to develop that. And glad to include, um, any and all types of staff, community members and so forth. So, Ms. White, I would be happy to connect with you. Ms. White, I would be happy to connect with you um later this weekend, begin talking about what that would look like.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Excellent. So that would be really something that would probably fall under Dr. Shadé Harris's department, maybe. I don't know.
I think for, for the moment, for the moment.
Department, maybe. I don't know.
We'll, we'll just
Whatever, we'll work
Discuss it and and come up with some ideas.
So is everyone in agreement at this point, as Mrs. Lilly stated, that um we we reach consensus right now to bring this back with more information after all, so that we've looked at our policies and all and and then move forward. So it sounds like we're probably being full speed, hopefully, when school starts um to be sincere. I know there's things now we have to close out, but things that we haven't closed out, we just need to get those reports in place and know that we can combine a few. I need to hear something from you. If you're in agreement with that, thumbs up. If you're in agreement with, not in agreement, thumbs down.
Ma'am, I have a question. I'm sorry, I was
Right now, let me see the thumbs. I just see Ms. Rizzi's thumb and my thumb. Everybody else got the thumbs down. Okay, Ms. Jones, I see her thumb. Okay, okay. All right. Yes, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you. Are we, this, before I give you a thumb, I wanted to get clarity on are we, are you asking us to make a decision on thumbs up, thumbs down, based on the equity and diversity committee or all of the committees proposed? I just wasn't clear, and I needed clarity.
All right. That's what I need to hear from you all now.
Okay.
Just trying to get some feedback. It's ten eighteen, ladies and gentlemen.
Madam Chair, can you, one more time, be so kind and ask us what you need us to do right now, so I can be clear. Thank you.
All right. Tonight, as Mrs. Lilly, Ms. Lilly, would you restate your suggestion?
Sure. Um, with the comment that Ms. White made and Mr. Cameras's um offer to work with Ms. White regarding the equity committee, I think the equity committee is off the table for a board discussion as far as adding that as one of the committees. So tonight, what I think you need to do, uh, or what I would hope that you would do is to give some consensus as to what you want, how you want to shape your policy on committees, right? What committees you want to add as standing, what committees you want to add as ad hoc. And so right now, of the, of the four committees, I think there were four. Yeah, of the four committees that Mr. Young mentioned that were potentially new, um, he said HR, policy, the diversity, and the audit, HR is off the table. Um, audit will be combined or is suggested to be combined with finance. Policy is suggested to be combined with board governance, and the F, the diversity and inclusion will be dealt with outside. So right now, what I guess, direction wise, I would ask, and I guess Ms. Burke would, um, if she can echo that, just let me know if you want me to change your policy to reflect those changes, and I'll bring you back the next time.
I have a follow up. I'm sorry, Madam Attorney. I would suggest because the goal and direction of the governance committee and the policy committee are two different directions and purposes. So I would kindly ask my school board colleagues to review your suggestion, your ask with the governance and policy committees separate.
That's, is however you all want, I thought that's what I heard, that you wanted to to combine them, and they could potentially be combined in the future. If you, if the board governance manual is the focus right now, you can move forward with your ad hoc committee, right? You just voted on that tonight. You can move forward with that. But in the future, if you want them to be combined, you can. It's up to however you want to do it, you know?
Yes, ma'am. I received that, but I just wanted to share that um with my school board colleagues that I would kindly request that the, because we've already voted on the governance committee, that that would not, the policy committee would not be combined because of the the focus and directions are different.
Understood.
All right. So for clarity purposes, tonight, we're not going to vote on any committees. But when we come back, we'll have reports in place as well as the opportunity to bring closure and to revisit what we can tie together. Thumbs up, thumbs down. All right. Okay, okay. That's a couple of people I don't see at all. Thank you for those persons who are on screen. I don't see everyone. Okay. All right, colleagues, moving forward to six point, excuse me, eight point zero three, discuss meeting in person and identify meeting dates and location starting in July twenty twenty one. We started this at our last meeting and we discussed it, and um Ms. Collins did put in place um a resume, a uh draft of a resolution. I know Ms. Lilly was working on that for us as well to ask that we meet on, during our meeting dates in the city council chambers on the second floor as much as we possibly can. So Ms. Lilly, do you want to give us an update on that until we get that done? So we can meet in person starting in July?
Right. To advance your goal of meeting in person in July, I reached out, as asked, um to the clerk's office to ask them about your remaining dates for your regular board meetings. Um, I do not, I do not have a response as of yet, which, you know, granted, it was just today, so I will follow up on that. Um, and we'll ask if they require a resolution. If not, we can simply um move forward with the consensus of the board with um arranging those meetings in the council chambers. If, as the dates um that you already have on your calendar um are listed, um if the council chambers is not available for any of those dates, then you, we would have to look at an alternate, alternative location, which um would simply um need to move that forward. I don't know that that would require a board, um, a board vote on the location, but at the same time, the council chambers is a preferred location, and we will have to discuss internally an alternative location if those days are not available.
Excellent. Any questions regarding? Even though the governor has placed, lifted some things, we just want to make sure we have ample space and people can be comfortable and spread out in the superintendence, brainstorming um some other strategies or places that we may be able to use as well. So right now, we're just trying to get started for July in the beginning, but henceforth, we may move elsewhere. I just want to, since our children will be back fully, we need to be back fully as well.
Madam, Madam Chair, I see Ms. White has has a question.
All right, Ms. White?
Well, I did have a question, but I think you sort of answered it because I wanted to know why we had to come back in July when we only have one meeting in July.
Yes.
But you said we had one meeting, right?
That's right, July nineteenth. That's correct.
So why can't we come back in August?
Because our new fiscal year starts the first of July, and our children will be in summer school. So since our children will be, yeah, so since we're asking them to ride the school buses and come back, um, a discussion that took place earlier stating that uh we need to be in place as well. Does that answer your question? Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, consent agenda. Um, those items listed are for your own reading pleasure regarding the joint construction team. Um, I know that Green Elementary has been almost torn down, Mr. Cameras, completely. Yeah, and and um, yes, he's already addressed Marsh. And um the old Thompson building is still there. Report from committees, if you have any, they should be listed in that section for your own reading. Not unless there's some questions, there are questions. Next item, new business. Any questions, Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, I do see a couple of persons, uh, Ms. White, Ms. Gibson.
Ms. White, the floor is yours.
I just had a question on, you had, I was trying to tell you what you was going a little fast. So when uh, will the other school uh be coming down? I think you said one of them is still up, Thompson. When would that one be coming down?
Mr. Cameras?
I didn't hear the full question, Ms. White.
Ms. White would like to know the status of Thompson Middle School being um demolished.
Yes, so since that is a project separate from River City, uh, a determination that was made um several months ago prior to the board's uh resolution uh on construction, the uh Thompson demolition needed to go out to bid from scratch as a completely separate project um unrelated to River City. Uh, given the board's resolution, uh, the city has paused on that um as that would be something that would now be under the purview of RPS. So once we have hired um our additional procurement personnel, um, I will uh bring a proposal to the board in terms of how you want to prioritize uh the use of our resources for that effort.
I have a Yes, please, go right ahead.
Another follow up question. So because of the resolution, that ceases the demolition of the school, is that what you were saying?
Yes, ma'am. For now, until we're able to accomplish it on our own.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I'm now speaking related to new business and wanted
All right, I had, one moment, this, I haven't announced that yet. I thought you were asking something regarding the um, will we just joint JCT or the um receive reports from committees? So if not, moving forward, new business, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. Um, so I would like uh following up on the discussion regarding uh George With and Construction. I would like for the board to meet on Monday. Um, my suggestion is to meet at six thirty on Monday, the twenty fourth, uh, to have a dedicated meeting specific to uh next steps on George With.
Are you making that a motion?
Sure.
All right, Ms. Lilly? Ms. Lilly? Can't hear you.
Yes, yes.
You were saying something?
I, I was just, this is new business. We don't normally, your practice has not been to make motions in new business, but, you know, this is that's all I can say.
I understand. Mr. Cameras?
I just wanted to note that I have a pre-existing commitment at seven PM that evening. Um, so I'm not sure how I would um what what the board would like me to do on that front.
Okay. I have a meeting at six, twenty four.
So you may want to, you may want to see if you have a second so that you can fully discuss it, but
All right, thank you. Is there a second to Mrs. Um Gibson's, Ms. Gibson, may I ask you? Okay, I've got the question I'll ask once with this seconded and moving forward. All right. Mrs. Gibson has um motion moved that she wants to have a special meeting on the twenty fourth of May regarding um the school's construction. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Ma- Madam Chair, uh, I do see Dr. Harris Mohammed and then Ms. White.
Miss, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. I um would like a reconsideration of that date because the evaluation committee is looking at that week um to possibly try to meet. Ms. Page and I have been trying to compare calendars the past maybe five days, and Ms. Page can can follow up um if if she would like, but if we could look at another day and not the twenty fourth, because I think when Ms. Page and I talk, and maybe Ms. Burke, when you and I talk, or you and Ms. Page talk, not all three of us together, but the twenty fourth may be the day, sometime that day that we will have to meet, just because of what's, you know, coming down the pipe. And I know part of um, I'm in jury duty part of that week, and so I'm not available. And two days that week is only um I can provide to Ms. Page for the evaluation committee, and I think she's trying to work around my calendar diligently.
Thank you.
I would like to make it
I think, excuse me, I think Ms. White was the next person. Ms. White or Ms. Rizzi, who was listed?
It was me, it was me. Thank you, um, Madam Chair. I was going to say, and maybe I missed the time. I wanted to know what time it was. And plus, I also wanted to make a comment. If we couldn't do it Monday, we need to do it sometime during the week um sooner than later.
All right. Ms. Ms. Gibson, you had a comment? Or Ms. Dorr, who was next? Excuse me, who was next, Mr. Young?
And Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Dorr.
Ms. Gibson?
So um, one suggestion, I mean, when we have had um, you know, special meetings, they're generally uh, you know, not meetings that go until ten thirty. Um, and so I would, it might be uh worth considering if we were to have this meeting um earlier, and then uh since uh Mr. Cameras is is not able to attend at seven, perhaps the evaluation committee could begin their meeting at at seven o'clock.
All right. Any other comments, Mr.? You said Ms. Dorr was next, I believe. That correct? Ms. Dorr?
Fine, I was just going to make a comment that the finance committee meeting is on Tuesday. Um, so that date is not available as well. And um if any action is to be taken before um June first, I think that's the objective here. Um, but it doesn't seem like this board wants to really take any action, so I'm not really sure what the purpose of this meeting is.
Thank you. Mr. Young, anyone else? I'm listed on this someplace, too.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, yes, ma'am, you are next, and then Ms. White has also requested opportunity to speak.
All right. Um, my question is, with, to meet, to discuss what? I mean, was already decided tonight not to have a discussion at all, or even to get to that point uh just to, just to talk anything through, not extensively. But now we get to this point for new business, which technically is really not new business, but I know you can make a motion whenever you so desire. To meet, to do, is is to, is this to address what exactly? I mean, the other resolution still upholds itself, so we would be meeting to, I I'd like to know what the purpose of the meeting would be. Um, we've been meeting, 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 talking, 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 and it's decided. It's been decided, the board, the board. So my question to you, Mrs. Gibson, is please tell us what the purpose of the meeting would be, but we want to hear from Mr. White first, and then I, I ask that you give us an overview. Ms. White?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm, 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 I'm kind of I know what um, Ms. Gibson is actually indicating, because we had such a long meeting tonight. Um, the meeting would address the wishes of the other school board members who had already decided that, I heard someone say that it wouldn't be no, it wouldn't be no use that we discuss what we feel based that what, what, what has been left out of what was presented to us. So we did not, of course, I did not, I'm gonna speak for me. I did not want to go on and just linger on tonight when we have such a big, a busy agenda tonight. What we need to do is, we already have what is presented to us from the mayor and it's in the council. But they don't have what we want. There are some things are missing. And so there was no reason to, we can't give it to you tonight what we're looking for. We need a discussion. We need to sit down and discussion. And if you feel that way as a, as a board, that we, we don't have anything to give and we don't have anything to offer, then why do, are we going for June the first then? I just heard that. So why are we going for June the first? So what we're going to do? Sit here as a board and not do anything, and we just received something from the city council? But no one wants to sit in together and collaborate the ideals. These are just not open ideas that you just throw out. I don't think that we should just be throwing out ideas. We need to collaborate. We got one set of things from the city council and the mayor, but we have nothing from here, but we want to just throw out things tonight. No, that's not how a team works for me. I'm sorry.
Ms. White, please be mindful that um your resolution that you supported was the start of that conversation. Please be mindful. Let me finish, let me finish. We listened to you. Yes, so when you Yes, so when you says nothing from the board, the board did make a decision whether I agree with or not. And it is the will of the board, so to say that we shouldn't receive. And when we asked for this during the part with the motion for discussion, it was never brought up. Well, let's, and why didn't we have a, if you're looking back, nothing we can do about it, we should have had a discussion, we should have collaborated.
No, not discussion, it needs to be written.
Excuse me, please, excuse me, please, I will be quiet and respect you as well. Right now I have the floor. So what I'm saying to you is, all of us are passionate about providing for our children. So to say now that we're gonna have to do things as. Four, five board members state this here, there was no remorse, no, we want to hear what you have to say, no discussion. And to be exact, ladies and gentlemen, we're ahead of ourselves, you know, we're in meetings until after one o'clock in the morning. So we said such a lengthy discussion, look at the facts. Look at the data, this meeting is ten thirty seven, this is good for us, I'm very pleased with the flow of the meeting. But so far as wanting to have a discussion now, what I'm asking is to discuss exactly what. There were some things in the mayor's resolution, excuse me, mayor's letter that you didn't like, person didn't like. No problem, come together and discuss it, but when we patiently. Listen to the resolution that was given, the same. Courtesy was not extended, it is what it is, so it's the will of the board in the end. So if Mrs. Gibson wants to explain that and put in a motion, let's move forward.
Ms. Burke, I'm sorry, but you cut me off also.
Go right ahead, Ms. White.
You're on mute.
Sure, I'm not sure what Ms. Gibson is feeling, I'm saying what I'm saying. That, yes, it was a letter given to us, but that doesn't change anything, I just heard someone say, well, it seems like the board doesn't want anything. That doesn't accomplish anything as a team because someone doesn't want anything. And no one can speak for me, I'm not sure if they can speak for everyone else, but that doesn't, that doesn't build schools. That doesn't get kids in classrooms, that doesn't help our learning, so we just gonna leave it like that, I assume. Now, I'm finished.
Thank you, Mrs. White, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I don't, I'm not. I try to avoid passive aggressive stuff, guys, so I'm just gonna get to the point. So the meeting that I'm proposing would be to to continue to move forward and make progress. We've put a, you know, talked about the committee, the the community advisory board, we need to move forward on that. The board should have a formal discussion on on the program of the building. We should have a formal discussion about how many students are going to be in in the building. We should also probably begin to have a conversation if if there's time in in the meeting to talk about. The construction of the the technical center. These are all critical conversations to be having, and if there was a need for a discussion this evening. Then I it doesn't make sense that there would not be a need for a discussion. That would give us more time for that on on Monday next week. And so to help with the with any conflicts. You know, I suggest, and you know, honestly, setting up a meeting should not require a motion. But this is, this is where we're at, and so so be it, so I revised the time of my motion to before six P M. And so I would suggest that this is a meeting that goes from six until seven. To discuss next steps on 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 school construction. And that would allow, if the evaluation committee wants to meet at seven, they are able to do so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make sure that my thoughts are collected here because, once again, I am in a quandary. Let's just put this out here and be upfront. Statements were made that we received a letter from the mayor and his team. And what was just mentioned was, there are things that need to be discussed in this new meeting that was just proposed. How are we not working as a team when clearly there has been discussion about the points that Ms. Gibson, Ms. White. Has just brought up that need to be discussed? I know for myself as a board member, I have not seen one thing from the board. That talks about an advisory committee, that talks about community engagement, that talks about applications. But all of this stuff has been prepared and is ready to go. So how are we operating as a team when conversations are being held and had? And agreements are being made and put, ready to be put forward, but we are not doing that with all nine members. So I agree, yes, there is a discussion that needs to be happened, that needs to happen, but if we are going to have it. Let's be real, let's be transparent, and let's stop these shenanigans. Because it is so much going on that I'm sitting here, I don't know nothing. So yes, we put forth a resolution because we want to get to a point of moving forward. We are willing to work to collaborate with our school board members, and I apologize for being exasperated. And I really try to hold back and not do this, but this is crazy. And so if we are going to do this, let's be fair, let's be honest, and let's be transparent and stop taking the community on this circus that we are playing here. Because I have not seen anything, so how are we, whatever needs to be in writing, where is it? Where's the data, where's everything that we've been talking about since this resolution has been prepared? Please help me, help me, I'm asking all of you, help me, so that we can get on one accord. Because we are not on one accord, and we need to stop this. Every week, when someone puts forth a resolution, nobody wants to address it, nobody wants to talk, we should not talk about it right now. It's too many things on the agenda, we got too many things on the agenda every meeting we have, and we talk about this, this is the purpose of bringing forth a governance committee. And I just don't understand why one week it works for certain groups, certain people, and then next week it doesn't. So either we gonna work together, and if we're gonna work together, let's work together, but let's be honest about what we're doing and stop this. Where's the paperwork? You said there are things that need to be in writing, you said that there are requests that you feel that we need to discuss with the mayor, where is it? Why are we not discussing this as a board, why are we discussing this as a subcommittee? Because that's what it is. That entails several board members that are that are not a part of this group. So yes, I want to move forward in whatever way, good, bad, or indifferent. But I want to be included, we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, how are we including when half the board is not even included in what's going on? And I, again, I have to apologize for being so exasperated. But when I think of the 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 way that we are carrying on week after week after week, meeting after meeting after meeting. And it's just like a puppet, I feel like I feel like I'm on a puppet string here. And I'm just being totally honest and transparent. So I I'm not available for a meeting next week because we were ready to talk tonight. And whatever you wanted to put forth, whatever you had, whatever concerns, we address them, we listen, we hear. You all are entitled to bring whatever concerns you have, and I want to add, they are very valid. They are very valid, but we are not going to get to a happy medium if we keep with this push and pull, it's a push and pull, it's a push and pull. I'm tired, I know the community is tired. Enough is enough, and I'm sorry, and I'm I'm off it right now, I'm so sorry for for, I'm so sorry.
No, please do not apologize, thank you, thank you so much, please do not apologize as a team. Thank you, thank you, we hear your passion, we hear your vision, we hear how we all would like to work and. Anyone else listed, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am, in the following order, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Page, Ms. Door, Ms. Rizzi, and Ms. White.
Ms. Page?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
I share the sentiment of my colleague, Ms. Jones. Because she is absolutely correct. There are conversations that are being had. That appears to be in violation of our policy. Three or more board members. Because I've had conversations. With some of my colleagues just on last Friday about a draft document. Another conversation with a colleague about this same draft document about this advisory committee. So there are conversations being had. But that document has not been shared, and today is Monday, what time is it, it's ten forty six. I had a conversation Friday morning of last week, and that document still has not been shared. We, we have been elected. By our constituents to do a job. To make decisions, sound decisions. That's in the best interest of our children. Yes, we're going to disagree, that's okay. But there was a. Resolution earlier to have a discussion about the information that was shared with us from the city. But we chose not to have a conversation. Now, ten forty seven, we want to have another meeting, and it's like, we got things to do. We have the evaluation committee, we have the finance committee, we have the vacant property committee. We are not being considerate of each other's time, we're not being considerate of the public's time. We must stop these shenanigans, because you know what? The relationship of the board, the working relationship of the board and the superintendent sets the tone of the school division. And right now, and then we talking about teacher retention? You think teachers want to stay in this school division and we're behaving in this manner? We must work together to get the job done, and right now, we are not working together.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Door?
I'm good.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ooh, where do I start? So from the way I see it, I thought if we, you know, I guess we'll have to review this meeting, but it appeared to me that we agreed to have a follow up meeting. It seems to me that we told the community that we were going to have a further discussion about this. Now, I mean, I guess we have to vote on it and to see if that that, but you know, I thought that that was something that we'd agree to do. So I see you shaking your head, maybe I'm wrong about that, okay, so I could totally be wrong about it. You know, what I see happening too is that, you know, when I first joined this board. Multiple trainings we had said that the board would make policy and the superintendent would carry it out. So as far as I see it. That vote on the resolution was the will of the board. We were, it was drilled in our head that we were to accept the will of the board and not argue or debate or fight. Once a, once a vote had been taken, I just don't see that necessarily happening here. And you know, the discussion hasn't been rational, it's been filled with a lot of emotional rhetoric that I don't necessarily appreciate. When the bottom line is that the board voted on this, it's the will of the board, we need to move forward, we need to find a way to make this work. This document that is being referred to, actually, and Ms. Door, you can correct me if I'm wrong, at one meeting you said, you know. If Stephanie gets together a proposal for how this advisory board will work, we'll review it, so I was working on that, okay? And I had plans to, I wanted to wait until after tonight to see, you know, what would happen, and then I had plans to distribute that to you. I can distribute it to you early tomorrow morning, it's just an application I wanted your input on. I don't think that this has to be so dramatic and this anger like, oh, we're, no, nobody's conspiring to do anything behind anybody's back. That is not what's occurring. What I see is that the board made a decision, and now it's time to move forward and get this thing done so that the kids can get into George with High School. ASAP, yesterday, if possible. But I think that, you know, if we all wanted to do this, if it is the will of the board, we want to work together, we can get that done, there's nothing we can't do. If we don't work together to achieve it, or if we do work together, I'm sorry, and we can't get anything done if we don't work together. But at this point, the decision has been made and we need to move forward. And do it together, do it together. I'm sorry, this didn't work out for everybody in terms of what they wanted, I've I've had that experience multiple times since I've served on this board. But it is the will of the board at this point. And we need to figure out how to make the best of this and do this for the children. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi, Mr. Young, is anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. White and then Ms. Door.
Ms. White?
And what I just want to continue is, so everybody get the record, I'm not sure about the conversations, I hear one of the board members said some about conversations. Well, it wasn't no conversations with me, I can say that much, but I had wrote my own. What RPS procurement professionals will oversee the process. And it's, and I just didn't say it today, I said it at the compact. So if you was at the compact meeting listening, you would know what I said. So it's nothing new to the board, it's nothing new to the city council. There are certain things that I want to see with the RPS procurement. All of you received a letter from the procurement director. So those are the things that I wanted, who I wanted to talk to. Based on the conversations that I have here and the things that I want, because I know none of you are subject matter experts. So I need someone who's subject matter experts. And that was my thing for tonight. So when someone said about the discussion and we hiding this and doing this, I had no hiding anything. I said mine's at the compact, I just got more questions that I need to be asked and need to integrate with the city councils. Because I do know the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White, Ms. Door?
Thanks, I decided to speak after all. So, so just to recap for history, at six P M. Tonight. I made a motion that was seconded by Ms. Jones to introduce a discussion on George with. It is hard to feel like there's not an ulterior motive when a majority of this board decided to not advance forward that discussion. I don't understand why. Earlier tonight, we couldn't have had this discussion about George with, and we could have had it agendaed, we could have hashed this out, I know there are differing perspectives. But it's hard for me to understand why a majority of this board decided to not have that discussion. Especially in light of the fact that we received a message of good faith from the mayor and several members of city council. In an effort to compromise. There are some other ideas from those of us on the board, Ms. Jones and I have had a proposal that we'd like to bring forward to the board. To at least get the RFP around just the design and architectural services initiated while we continue to hash out the construction next steps. So there's a lot of ways that I think that we could find some common ground, I think we owe it to the mayor and to members of city council to provide a response to their letter. In fact, I believe that there was a promise made that there would be a response to that letter. And board leadership can talk about that, so it's strange to me, very strange to me that. We decided not to have that conversation tonight. And I also appreciate, Ms. Rizzi, the work that you're doing on the application. I had heard from multiple sources that there were multiple conversations happening about that application, now maybe you're working on it in a vacuum, that's fine. But clearly there's distrust, right, between all of us. Or else, if there wasn't distrust, it would have been fine to have this meeting, this conversation tonight, right? So it is what it is, it's very unfortunate, and I think the reality is that we're sitting in a situation where. We're insourcing school construction, fine, will of the board, but the harsh reality of. we're insourcing school construction, fine, will of the board, but the harsh reality of that is that in making that decision, George with construction is going to be delayed, period. And so some of us are trying to figure out how we can uphold the will of the board while also not delay with George with, and I think that's a valid discussion that we need to be having as a board. Now, if we want to vote that no, insourcing school construction is the most important thing right now, and we don't care that it delays George with, that is a fine discussion. But I think that, I don't think that we fully comprehended the consequences of insourcing school construction when that vote was made. And that, I think, is where what we're not talking about is the elephant in the room. So I am interested, personally, the only thing I'm interested in is a brand-new George with as soon as possible. And I think everybody on this board agrees with that. So the reality is though, that if RPS builds George with, it is not going to be built by 2024, period. So where do we go from here? Is there a compromise or isn't there?
Thank you, Ms. Door. Mr. Young, is there anyone else?
Ma'am Chair, I believe Ms. Gibson.
Ms. Gibson?
This is just a lot for, for scheduling a meeting, guys. I, I moved to call the question.
All right, I need to, um, make sure that there has to be a motion. Ms. Lilly, can you walk us through that process, please, to call the question? We just can't stop.
Ms. Gibson, um, made a motion to call a question. Is there a second to that? To end debate and to move forward with the question, the voting?
So it has to be a vote, in other words, before moving?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
The last meeting, I didn't do that.
A second and a vote to close the discussion, and, and in fact, it has to be, um, six votes, um, a two-thirds majority to, um, approve closing of the motion, uh, closing of the debate, rather.
Thank you. Mrs. Gibson has made a motion to close this discussion out. Is there a second? Ms. White?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? Being mindful, is Mrs. Lilly stated six votes are needed to close it out. Ms. Billy?
Ms. Door?
Yes.
I'm sorry, was that Ms. White that made the second? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Um, Ms. White? To vote on closing the discussion?
I, I thought already voted. Then, yes?
Okay, you said second, I didn't know, okay.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
You're muted, Ms. Page.
I want to make sure I'm clear, we're voting to the close the discussion?
Yes.
No?
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-one. Now you have your original motion before you.
I, I motion that the board meet on Monday, Mar, uh, May twenty-fourth, it's from six until seven PM to discuss school construction.
And Ms. Rizzi made the second to that motion earlier?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Just a moment, please. Is there any more? May I, Ms. Burke move for?
Um, yes, and then we can have a discussion because I see, um, we have some people that have a discussion as well. So before we vote on that, you've heard the motion, you spin seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, I have a question. I think I heard, uh, I think I heard the superintendent say that evening he had an obligation at six-thirty and that, uh, Dr. Harris Mohammed said the value committee, uh, just, uh, trying to, uh, confirm what I think I heard earlier and just derive it. Some clarification from those two persons.
For Dr. Harris Mohammed, that is correct. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Young, and speak out of order, Madam Chair, school board colleagues. That is correct. I, I am not available. I have committed.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
Thank you, and I want to honor that commitment to Mrs. Page. Uh, I, I just can't, I can't. I'm, I'm just not going to do that.
Thank you.
So I'm not available to me. But that doesn't mean I don't want to support and, and talk, you know, that's very important to me, but just like I, I make a commitment to other board members to, um, be on a meeting or something, I, you know, I want to honor, always honor requests of me from other board members, and I didn't, you know. So anyway, no, I'm not available. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, I, I have a comment to make. As Ms. Door stated earlier, in terms of the date, we'll meet on Monday, which I have another commitment to now, if Ms. Page has that. Um. So that June first date is, is gone anyway, so we have meetings every day, every night. Where is there time to work that in? So it's not going to work for me. I'm going to both know, only because, not that I don't want to have a discussion, but to move forward in terms of we need to do this, we need to do that. We need to get ready for our children to come back to school in, in July and September. So at some point, that discussion, sure, we can have that, we can have that discussion in June. We can have that as an end of the school year. But, um, for this coming week, I don't know how many meetings in all that you all have. It, I don't, and of course, at some point, we're going to have to discuss that and make those plans anyway. Then plus, I don't know to what extent the superintendent and his team have had a chance to, to address that. All right, so, um, are we ready for the vote? Anyone else, Mr. Young?
I, I moved to call the question, so we should, we, we should have called the question at this point.
We, we already addressed that, didn't we, Mrs. Um, Lilly? The question, we voted on it, but did that win?
Yes, we, yeah, yeah, we, that passed eight-one. So we're, we're back to the original motion and ready to vote.
Right, exactly. We're ready to vote on the original, whatever, so we're ready to vote on that.
So the motion was, um, Ms. Gibson, um, to have a special meeting to discuss George with in construction on Monday, May twenty-fourth, from six to seven, was that right? I just want to capture that court and next steps, and the second but was by Ms. Rizzi. Ms. Door?
No.
Ms. White?
I had a comment, but. Um.
It's just time for the vote right now.
Uh, no.
Ms. Gibson? Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I'm sorry, no, I was muted. No, ma'am.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Page?
I had a comment, but no.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Motion fails, seven, two.
Thank you all very much. Um, any announcements before we get ready to go into close?
Yes.
Anyone listed? I, I would, Mr. Young, anyone listed?
Yes ma'am, uh, I believe it's Ms. Paige, uh, let's begin with Ms. Paige.
Ms. Paige, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to give a shout-out to Bushall Middle School, Ms. Carver in her eighth grade civics class. I had an opportunity to provide them a session on local government and the students were fantastic. I had such an awesome time with the students at Bushall Middle School. And I want, like I said, kudos to Ms. Carver and all that she is doing with her students, her eighth grade civic class, and, um, planning to return, and I'm looking forward to it. So again, kudos.
Thank you, Ms. Paige. Sounds like you had fun teaching.
I did.
Very nice. Mr. Young, who else is listed?
Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to, uh, send a congratulations to the students who have completed the um, early college academy program and have, uh, received their associates in science, um, for having completed that program.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
Ms. Door?
Ms. Door?
Uh, thank you. Would also like to extend my, uh, congratulations to the, um, the recent graduates and also wanted to say that, um, I, uh, participated in a community walk, um, with Safe Routes to Schools, um, to discuss optimal, um, walks from neighborhoods to their schools, and I would highly recommend it to anyone. Um, it's a great resource that's available to us, um, and have some, uh, just really grateful to the parents and community members that came out to discuss how we get our kids walking and get our kids, um, safely, uh, to and from school.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
No ma'am.
All right, I have one announcement to make as well. Um, this past Sunday, the Kiwanis Club, which I belong, along with Principal Giles, Dr. Giles at, um, Carver Elementary, the Kiwanis Club set up a school, the little miniature laboratories in front of, um, the RAS building, which is where the, where the transitional families, I think that's the new title for that department now, rather than McKenty, was it McKento, Venti, Vento? What, what is it, Shadi?
Um, Center for Families in Transition, C-FIT.
Yes, so we were able to furnish, um, a cabinet there with books for students in the community. Ms. Giles spoke beautifully. I invited Mrs. Um, Mrs. White and her sons were there, participated. It was a grand opportunity. And then the next miniature library will be placed, this is the international effort across the country with the, and internationally, with the Kiwanis Club, free books for children. So the next, um, bookcase will be placed in front of Carver in terms of putting books in and, um, dedicating that as well. So again, thank you to the Richmond chapter of the Kiwanis Club for, um, providing that for our community right there in front of, in Jackson Moore. So that was quite a delightful event. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
Yes ma'am, Ms. Page?
Ms. Page?
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Chair. On another note, um, I just want to share with favor one. We lost a great soul last week, um, Coach Bo Jones, who has been a staple, Huguenot High School, Falcons, Richmond Public Schools, um, as the head basketball coach. And he will be funeralized on this Saturday. And he did so much for his student athletes, and he will be sorely missed.
Thank you, Mrs. Page, and we have sent, um, a letter to the family on behalf of the board and the, um, administration. I know that you will be sending one as well. So, uh, that's, that family has a long extended, um, history within Richmond Public Schools and we stand out our deepest sympathy. All right, if there's no other information, we're ready to go on to close. Who, Mr. Young, you have the, um.
Yes ma'am.
And for those who are watching us, we do come back after close, so you'll see on the screen, it'll be a brief, um, time that we have to go on to close, and then we come back and close our meeting out. Thank you.
Yes ma'am. Pursuant to section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven, subsection, subsection A, subsection seven, in, in nineteen fifty is amended. I move that the school board of the city of Richmond convene in closed session for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board in litigation matters twenty-twenty-one dash oh-one, twenty-twenty-one dash oh-two, and twenty-twenty-one dash oh-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Move by Mr. Young, settled by Ms. Page. Are we ready to vote? Ms. Lilly?
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. You are now in first.
Give everyone back in a minute. Thank you all. Oh, there goes a dog.
Mrs. Burke, you are live and you can begin.
All right, thank you very much. We are now returning to our meeting. Mr. Young, would you please present the motion?
It'd be my pleasure. I move that the Richmond School Board direct its clerk to call for roll call vote of the board members that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convene in the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the Richmond School Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Young, settled by Ms. Page. We're ready to vote, Madam Attorney.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Not any motions are needed this evening. We only receive information. Therefore, if there are any other announcements, this meeting is now adjourned. Go on.